September fourteenth and the time is ten oh six. Thank you for joining us, those of you who are here. We also welcome AAG Olson, who's joining us. And I want to note that Member Carey, who is our liaison with Utah State Board of Education, who contributes and is with us each time just today, had a conflict and asked to be excused. So we excuse him today. I've asked Member Cisneros if she would offer the -- offer the -- like I'm going into a prayer. If she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Member Cisneros.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And she wanted to do it like a kindergartner, but she instead, she restrained that enthusiasm that little kids have. If you've ever worked in a kindergarten or first grade class and the kindergarteners, if you're coming in new and you're not doing it the way the teacher does, they do. That's not how we do it. You have to -- their teacher does it because that's the most important person in their lives at that age. So, so great. I brought with me a couple of things, but let's start with our public comment. We will, if there's individuals who've signed to give comment this morning. I know that I had an individual request, just because of scheduling, to add a comment at one thirty, which I agreed to. And so at one thirty, we will start with a comment, but we have two prior. So Carolyn Sherret and Daniel Baker both would like to. So Ms. Sherret, if you would like to come up first. Thank you so much. Good to see you.
Do I have to do something to this? Oh, it's automatic. It's so beautiful. Hi, my name is Carolyn Sherret. I'm Executive Director of American Preparatory Schools. And today I'm just filled with gratitude as last week, we celebrated our twentieth anniversary of serving Utah students. And those twenty years have flown by. I'm so grateful that I continue to be excited every day about this work. And I feel such a privilege to be able to partner with so many, really thousands of wonderful families here in Utah and have been doing this for over two decades. It's wonderful. It's a blessing in my life. And our campuses are doing well. It's fun to be here in fall. Fall is an exciting time for anybody in education, as you all know. So I also want to just express gratitude to live here in Utah where we have structures such as you, who can help us provide opportunities for our children to exercise and our families to exercise school choice. I'm grateful to have been able to watch the school choice development in the state over the last twenty-plus years and see how amazing it is that we went from zero percent to a little handful of pilot schools and then to eleven percent or something of our students now in charter schools. How exciting that is. It's been amazing. And I want to say that I'm grateful to you, our authorizer, for your support in this effort and your vision. I have read the proposed strategic plan that you guys will be considering later today. And I want to express my enthusiasm for the plan. And I'm really excited about how well articulated the plan is. I just want to quickly highlight two parts in particular. First, as I quote, the plan says, "The board actively champions the principles of educational autonomy, innovation, and flexibility in pedagogy, organization, and management." What an exciting and forward-thinking statement. As you know, innovation sometimes disrupts the status quo. And we have certainly found this to be true at various times in our twenty-year history. This past few years especially, we have experienced some disagreements with our regulator on some of the innovative practices that we have brought to children, especially our special needs children. But we're very excited that last week, the USBE voted to remove our corrective action plan on our special education program. And we feel we are moving forward into a new era of support and cooperation insight and understanding about innovative practices for special needs kids, especially in Utah. I'm feeling some hope that there are some new things being seen as benefits to our children. So we want to thank you, our authorizer, for your steady support of our charter during this last three or four years of intense regulatory work that we've been engaged in. The second part of the plan, I'd just like to quickly point out, is listed as one of your priorities, forming productive partnerships with authorized schools. And I just wanted you to know how grateful we are for this focus that you have. And we look forward to a continued positive and productive partnership with you. And we commit to doing all we can to support this priority. And finally, just a special general thank you for being citizens who are willing to volunteer time and work on boards. If our country didn't have people like you willing to work on boards, we would not have all the amazing things that we enjoy. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, spending the time to share with us today, too. Thank you so much, Mr. Baker.
Hi, my name is Daniel Baker. I'm having a bit of flashback because last time I sat here, I got heckled from the crowd.
And they all look very pleasant today.
These ones look better. Yeah, this is a much better audience. My name is Daniel Baker. I am a parent. I have four students that are currently in charter schools in Utah, grade first up through seventh. I also work with charter schools. I've worked with APA now for fourteen years, but I've also worked with schools in Nevada, West Virginia, Michigan. One of the unique things I think I bring to at least our organization is I also, my undergrad work and some work beyond that was in business and economics. And so I kind of look at things both from the education side and then the economics, smart decision-making side. And I was reading the strategic plan, and there were a lot of things that actually really pleased me in there. And one of them was when we talk about, one of the suggestions was an auto exemption from certain laws or regulations, assuming that, you know, the ones that involve student safety, things like that remaining place, as they obviously should. A lot of the laws and rules that have been written were written not understanding or before charter schools as an LEA were a thing. And so there's a lot of places in the law where language will say LEA, where it may be not really applicable to charter schools like it should be. I think that they could resolve those things through legislative action, that sort of avenue. But what I've seen in other states is states where they've built automatic exemptions into the charter system, it's basically removed a lot of the overhead that charter schools are just frankly not equipped to deal with. We're not a taxing authority. And so we have a limited pool of resources. If some need arises, we can't just generate more revenue. And so it's been really important for me to advocate for this. I'm very much a, and I believe Utah is a, let's get the least amount of restriction on things as possible and let people innovate. By all accounts, our students in Utah, we're a very, very high-performance state in education. Our kids, when it comes to states that require the ACT, our kids are in the top every year. We do well in the NAEP, we're in top ten every year. And we do it much cheaper than any other state. So we're doing things right, but I think it is that innovation that is driving that. I'm a firm believer in free market and that if we remove restrictions on the market, parents will vote with their feet, with their kids' feet, really. They're going to send kids to schools that they like and that they believe are producing what they want. And so when I was reading this, there's a few things in there that kind of tie to this. And I was really pleased to see that the strategic plan is thinking about these. Let's not over-regulate. Let's not overboarden. Let's not over-manage. Because in the private sector, you always weigh the cost of what's the cost of monitoring versus what do you resolve essentially in inefficiency? And if the cost to monitor is more than the inefficiency, then you're wasting money. And so as a taxpayer, I don't want to waste money. I don't want to waste my parents' money. I don't want to waste the citizens of Utah money. So I see this plan as really kind of pushing us more towards a, let's be a really true free-market state. Let's remove restrictions where it makes sense. Let's keep them in place where it makes sense. But I would just like to speak and just say that I really like the strategic plan and I look forward to seeing how this gets implemented. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in and for giving us that feedback. We really appreciate it to take the time. And I know you're both very busy and we appreciate you coming in and sharing that feedback with us. That's very helpful to us. And we need to continue to work to make sure charters have adequate resources. But I'm going to tell you, you don't want to be a taxing entity. If you think you get heckled from a crowd in here, just go to a truth in taxation hearing sometime and you'll hear heckling going on. But we need to make sure those are in place. And thank you for your feedback on the other aspects of the plan, too. We really appreciate it. Those are the two comments that we have this morning. And as I indicated, we'll have another one at one thirty, right at one thirty, as we return from lunch. On our agenda, so as a thought, and I had with me something that I pulled out the other day by Carl Weig, who is one of the great leaders, educational leaders, and writes about leaders and prepares leaders in education in the nation for many years at the University of Michigan. And I loved this little bit. He said, "Here's the rhetoric that concerns me. If you listen to educational administrators describe a typical day at work, they talk about taking the heat, putting out brush fires, getting burned by decisions, stopping rumors that spread like wildfire, looking for fire where they spot smoke, facing explosive situations, and watching the fireworks at board meetings." Having said all this, they often add that despite all this turbulence, they still have a burning passion for teaching kids and a fire in their belly to build fires under their colleagues as they too are willing to walk through fire on behalf of the kids." So beautifully written. And that's kind of where all of us exist. All of that, the difficulties and outside stresses, we are all in this room, willing to endure so that we can do good things for kids and make sure our families and children are served well and will continue to do that. So that, just that little thought of praising the work that all of you do and saying thank you. Our staff has been working very hard to make sure things are being taken care of. As we've been in the process of seeking a new executive director, who will be the third executive director in this history, as Ms. Sherret kind of pointed out, the growth in charter school membership. This will be our third and we'll have some opportunity. We, our board will have some instruction a little later today about where we are in that process, but our intent is to have some final interviews a week from tomorrow. And so that we can announce very soon a new executive director and be ready to move forward as we continue to grow. And I think that's all. Let's move to the consent agenda. And do we have consent? Not today, do we? Well, welcome. Come on in. We're glad you're here. I already said that you wouldn't even be here, so look at how happy we are that you'll be here. So we're glad that you're here. Yeah. Though consent is on here, do we have, we have consent items today? Yes. All right. So anyone have any discussion relative to the consent calendar? Or I'm willing to entertain a motion?
I'll move to adopt the consent calendar.
All right, a motion to adopt consent calendar, a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All right. So a motion by Member Smith, a second by Member Olson. Any discussion about any pieces of that consent or pieces that you need to pull potentially? Not seeing any, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to accept the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That passes unanimously. So we have approved that consent calendar. Let's now move to our small expansion application presentation. This is going to be a little new for, it's a part of the new process. So I'll turn to Ms. Stephenson maybe to introduce that and to take us into that presentation.
Thank you, Chair Bulls.
Yeah.
All right, just getting connected here. So sorry. Let me pull that up. And then we need this one. Okay. Thank you, Board, for your patience in getting that pulled up. As Chair Bulls mentioned, this is a new process for us to review the small expansions. And we have a total of ten applications that came in. And so we're really excited to share those with you. As a reminder, the way that the current board rule reads, a small expansion is fifty or fewer students, or it could be one grade level. It could be both one grade level and fifty or fewer students. And it should not necessitate any major renovations to the school. As I mentioned, we do have ten applications that we received. And so in this slideshow, I allocated two slides for each of the schools. The first slide will share their why, their justification of why they need this expansion, this small expansion. And then the second slide will have a little bit of the technical pieces as far as where enrollment currently sits or what grades they're currently serving. Chair, I was thinking that it might be good to go through this first. And then each of the groups, we have invited their board chair and their director, or they could delegate someone to attend in their place. And so after we look through it the first time, if you would like, I can go back and then have that time to discuss with individual schools if there are any questions, unless you have different direction you would like me to take.
That will work for us. Thank you. I just want to point out, too, it's also not only that you've talked about the parameters for being able to ask for a small expansion, but it's a less onerous process to do that as well, right? It's a shorter process.
That is correct. Yep, the application was moved down to one single page where we did ask for that justification of their need, which you will see reflected here, as well as the signatures of their board, so that it was a request coming from the board. And then we also did a review to make sure that there was no corrective action plans in place. The school wasn't on a system of support. They weren't in state turnaround or under any corrective action from the authorizer as well. All of the schools met all of those requirements that you will see today. We did have a few that maybe are on an internal year for some correction, but nothing that would be on our list of major concerns that we're looking for.
Yeah. And so this is also a nice opportunity to celebrate in schools expanding the work that they do. So let's go ahead with that presentation.
Thank you. All right. So as we mentioned, sorry, I forgot I had this process slide. So yes, our definition, they are providing that justification of need and then staff to do that check for any concerns. And each school does have representatives that are either here in person or online that can also address any questions that you may have as we invite them up after this first go-through. So our first applicant that we have, and these are just in alphabetical order, so that's how we ordered them, is Canyon Grove Academy. Canyon Grove Academy is asking for fifty additional students. As you can see there, they have been running a hybrid distance education program for about the last five years. Or, excuse me, they've had a waitlist for five years and in 2020 created the hybrid distance education program. And so between the students that they have on site and they're hybrid, they are unable to enroll any of their waitlisted students. And so that is why they are requesting this increase to their enrollment cap. One small note I would like to make on this one, this justification, you will notice, is going to be exactly the same as one other school's. The other school we had shared is like, here's a model of something you could say. And Canyon Grove felt like that also applied to them and so used that model statement. And so it does apply to both schools, but that's why you will see a redundancy on just this one statement between two schools. As far as their technical pieces, Canyon Grove Academy is right now at one hundred and one point one percent enrolled. They currently serve grades K through eight. And you can see their mission statement there that they have that community of learners where they're really partnering up with parents to help students have self-accountability and have their individual needs met. Going next, we also have Esperanza Elementary. As you can see there, they would like to add both seventh grade and fifty additional students in their request. They sent a very robust statement, and so I tried to pull out some of the most important pieces here, but they may have additional beautiful insights that they would like to add. Essentially, they would like to be able to offer their sixth grade students into that seventh grade so that they can continue the work that Esperanza has been doing. They have found much success. And you can see from some of those numbers there, when they began, they were like nine percent in mathematics, ten percents in language arts, and eleven percent in science. And through their efforts, they've been able to grow all of those percentages to thirty-five percent, thirty and thirty-six percent respectively. So huge growth, as well as the support of the Spanish language and culture and community. And so they would like to be able to continue that for students after the sixth grade where they currently end. So looking at their technical pieces, they are at one hundred point eight percent enrolled. And they again serve currently K through six, so this would be adding that seventh grade in addition to their seats. From their mission statement, you can see that their stakeholders try to work as a team to help each student become biliterate, multicultural, and to acquire the skills and attributes they need to be successful, both in their local and global community. Next, we have an application from Freedom Preparatory Academy. You will notice that Freedom Preparatory Academy does have four locations throughout the state. And so this is specific to their St. George campus. At the St. George campus, they would like to be able to add a sixth grade. The St. George campus started in the fall of 2021, and they've seen in their community that that sixth grade piece seems to be something that they get a lot of requests from parents about and could help be more supportive in answering requests from their community. So this data, they are sixty-nine point six percent enrolled across their LEA. And the St. George campus is serving grades K through five. And so this, again, may be a good way to help them respond to their community by adding in that sixth grade piece and boost some of that enrollment across their LEA. You can see their mission statement there that this is a school that helps students to think critically, connect socially, and serve selflessly. Next, we have Gateway Preparatory Academy. This is the school I mentioned that the statement is the same as you saw on the first slide. This was actually one of our very first applications we received, and we've been working together with Gateway for a number of years. And they were so excited about this updated process and, you know, everything looked really good the way they had phrased things. So we use this as one of our model examples that we were able to share when others had questions. Gateway Preparatory Academy is asking for fifty additional seats, fifty additional students for their school. They are at one hundred and two point two percent enrolled, and they serve grades K through eight. And so this, again, could be that way to answer that community need where that enrollment is high and that waitlist is long, and they would really love to be able to relieve some of that pressure within their community. Their mission is that they're providing individualized education, which emphasizes life skills and also helping to provide a safe, respectful, and supportive environment for students. Next, we have Lakeview Academy. Lakeview Academy is seeking fifty additional students. You may remember from a few years ago that this board approved a satellite for Lakeview Academy. And due to some of the concerns with the pandemic and the rising cost of building, that ended up expiring. And so they never went forward with that. And so they were kind of back to where they began at that point. And so right now, their plan is that they would like to seek these fifty additional seats so that they can start relieving some of that pressure with on their waitlist. And then, as you can see noted there, they would also like to be considered for a larger expansion when that application is completed and ready to be received for another two hundred seats so that they can start building up towards, you know, additional ways to serve students. Right now, they are one hundred and one percent enrolled, and they serve grades K through nine. You can see their mission there. They are trying to develop capable, confident, and contributing members of society. And they feel that those three Cs are an integral part of their purpose and the design of their program. And it really is something they take pride in, in developing their students to be capable, confident, and contributing. Next, we have New Ames. And the New Ames request is to add ninth grade and fifty additional students. And you will see from our data point here that currently across the LEA, they are at eighty-six point two percent. So when we were first looking at that, we thought, you know, maybe those additional seats aren't needed. But as we began talking to the director and seeking some additional clarity on what they are looking at, they have, in their charter, allocated certain amounts of students for each grade. And they have always had the flexibility to do ninth grade, but haven't actually used that, I believe, since two thousand and eight. And so they would like to, you know, officially begin offering this ninth grade back. And by having those fifty additional seats, that gives them some flexibility into which grade levels, you know, if a student comes into ninth grade or if they need some additional tenth grade seats, that they could kind of move those seats around and make sure that they are remaining true to their charter as far as enrolling a certain amount of students in a certain grade level. As you know, New Ames is one of our highest-performing charter schools, and they are a school of choice that seeks to provide a rigorous, supportive, early college experience on a university campus, and they are currently located on two different campuses. Next, we get to St. George Academy. St. George Academy has asked to add seventh grade. If you remember, when St. George Academy opened, they have had some struggles with enrollment and had actually come before the board and had some corrective actions that they worked to address with their director and with their board leadership. And they have been able to continue this thriving school and really being able to meet needs within their community and to find ways to continue to find success, even with a lower enrollment. However, with that, they have been constantly trying to go to their drawing board and figure out what else can we try? How else can we encourage students into our community? And so one of the ways they would like to try is adding seventh grade that better aligns with what they're seeing within their community. And we actually just discussed this today in our authorizing committee, and so that will be coming to the full board next month. They've changed on their vision statement where they had previously been very focused on early college and only early college. They're now trying to create a more inclusive high school environment and middle school environment for the students that are attending. And so they would still have that college prep aspect, but also being able to provide services for students that are not ready for that rigorous environment. So again, they are currently at forty point four percent enrolled, serving grades eight through twelve. But their suggestion is that adding that seventh grade could be a piece to help boost that enrollment and help them continue to find success. The mission, as it currently reads, is that they are providing their students with a strong academic foundation that prepares them for a successful university experience and their future learning endeavors. And as noted, there are some slight changes there that we'll be reviewing as a board next month as well. Next, we get to Utah Arts Academy. Utah Arts Academy would like to add eighth grade. They are located in St. George. And when that split occurred from Tuacan and Utah Arts Academy was created, they found that adding eighth grade would be a benefit to them. You can see there that in their area, K through five is typically what their elementary schools are serving. Intermediate is covering six through seven. Junior high covers eight through nine. And then high school for the district model is ten through twelve. And so right now, where they have been doing nine through twelve, they fall right in the middle of that junior high range. And so their hope is that by adding that eighth grade, they can also meet the needs of their community and help ensure that students are not having to transfer in in the middle of a junior high year. So for their technical pieces, they are sixty point nine percent enrolled and currently serving grades nine through twelve. Their mission statement is that they are combining a rigorous academic program with pre-professional training in the performing visual and media arts. And that they find that by stimulating their students' creativity, they can really give a robust educational experience that appeals to universities. experience that appeals to universities and other pursuits that these students might have. Next, we have Valley Academy. Valley would like to add ninth grade and 50 additional students. Valley is another one of our schools that has been working closely with staff for the last few years and is really hopeful that they can get this release valve here. They are actually our highest enrolled charter school, and you'll see there that their current charter has a max of 500 students. They have a waitlist that's, you know, over 200 students, and that they can accommodate about 650 without any renovations and while still keeping their student count low. And so they feel like they have the space, they are ready to take on these students, and that it would also fit into their community model. I was also appreciative of their last statement there that they find in their community that some of their students have a lot of anxiety about attending an extra school, and so this again would be another way that they can respond to their student needs and their parent needs by hopefully helping to eliminate some of that anxiety that students might feel. As I mentioned, they are our highest enrolled of all of our requests. They are sitting at 106.2% enrolled, and that is with a waitlist as well. So they currently serve grades K through eight, and you'll see their statement there that they are dedicated to achieving excellence in education through character and pathways for the future. And they have that little asterisks there that their pathways includes these beautiful four pillars where it's academics, technology, fine arts, fine and performing arts, excuse me, and social emotional learning. And then our final application, this is number 10, if you've been following along, is for Vanguard Academy. Vanguard Academy would like to add 50 additional students. They have recently entered into an articulation agreement for some students in neighboring schools to be able to come, as well as having students at their own school and community that, you know, have siblings and would like to continue on at their school as well. And so as we looked at their technical pieces, they are at 97.8% enrolled across the LEA, so not at that over mark yet. However, we wanted to commend them on their approach of looking forward and trying to be proactive before they get to that 100% mark, even though, you know, they're right close there, so that they can continue to enroll students both from their community as well as their neighboring communities that now have that articulation agreement and would like to come to Vanguard and participate in their robust academic experience as well. You can see there that their mission is to empower their students to excel in college and careers, and they do that through exceptional math, science, and leadership skills, inspired by music, and a passion for learning. And so that takes us through all of our 10 applicants. Chair, as I mentioned, if you would like, I can go back and we can then talk about each one individually. Each school does have representatives either here or online or anything else that the board would like to discuss at this point.
Why don't we go back to the first of those slides and then, at the pleasure of the board, let's see if they would, if they need to stop at anyone to ask clarifying questions, and then we could ask that. If not, we'll move on. Unless someone sitting there saying, yeah, as we get through, if we haven't asked you to speak and you really want to, we'll make sure you have that opportunity too, but let's just start with those, starting with Canyon Grove. Does anyone on the board have questions that you would like to address to Canyon Grove folks?
Chair, it's not to Canyon Grove, it's in general that I would, if there's possible that the board could just discuss general, and I don't know if I care, I just keep coming up with the question, and one of the schools, I think, was a little more transparent about their intent. And when I see some of the applications, it seems to me that they're getting, the schools are going to use the small expansion to basically like grow year over year over year. So this year, they would ask for a grade in 50, and next year, they'll come back for the next grade in 50, and they'll just continue to grow their school that way, when in reality they're looking for a larger expansion, and they're just doing it piecemeal. And so I keep asking myself, do I care? And I don't know, I guess I'm just looking for more transparency around the full intent. And then some of the requests, although it's one grade and only 50 kids, it's dramatically different. So going from a K six to a middle school is a dramatically different process. Going from a middle school to a high school is a dramatically different process. So do we care, or do we say, well, we'll approve it, it's on the school to make it successful? And all I'm proposing is the questions. I actually have not come up with answers for myself, so that's why I'm hoping that the board would have a transparent discussion around some of those questions I'm having.
Yeah, great idea. Yeah, let me go to Member Olson and then Ms. Stephenson after that.
Yeah, I had some similar thoughts, and if I can just add to that, without answering the question, but just to add to my questions. I've reviewed our small expansion policy and procedure and application. I remember when we worked on this in authorizing. What I don't really remember discussing is what exactly our standards are and what we're looking for. How are we scrutinizing these applications? I'm really concerned that several of these applications are schools where they're already struggling significantly in enrollment, and so what, are we just hoping that authorizing even more is going to solve the problem at those schools? So I'm just interested in hearing the board members' thoughts about what our standards are for approving these applications, because so far, I'm not sure I have any idea what those standards are.
May I go to Ms. Stephenson, then back to Member Smith?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to speak to Member Cisneros' question about if this could be a way to bypass essentially doing a large expansion or a satellite. We had that same question, and I think the safety or the place that holds it from not essentially being that is the requirement of no major renovations. And so really, whatever is requested, they would have to be able to accommodate either within their current school or through, you know, some sort of small changes to their school. But I believe, of course, I don't have my crystal ball, but I believe that that will be the safety mechanism there, because there would come a point, if you continue to add students in grades, that I believe additional space or building would be needed to accommodate all of those students in grades. So that is what we've come up with, but again, we'll leave that discussion up to the board.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
So I think one of the things that we should look at as we're looking at the expansion requests, the small expansion requests for schools that are not currently at enrollment capacity or that are well below, is they're usually trying to come into alignment with local district, right? And so they're looking at the expansion request as I'm adding a grade and not necessarily adding students as an attempt to fill out my student count and keep myself viable. So I'm generally pretty favorably disposed towards those sorts of requests because we're trying to help them be successful, and they're not asking to change themselves dramatically. They just want to help their enrollment to be viable.
Vice Chair Phillips?
I agree with Member Smith in that the alignment with your district is a huge deal, and it causes all kinds of problems in enrolling students and for the schools that reside in districts that do not align with those districts. But I also want to address the idea of an enrollment problem. This is something that our board has kicked around a lot over the years since I've been on the board, which is now getting to be quite a number of years. And it usually can be defined as a discrepancy between what the school is authorized for in certain years and then ultimately, and what it's enrolled at. I, all of us who have been through the process of becoming an authorized charter school and then dealing with various ups and downs in enrollment, depending on demographics where you reside and so forth, understand that when you're first being authorized as a school and have first given that application and you're guessing numbers, it's a guess, and it's somewhat arbitrary, first of all, and we don't usually go back and change those caps, because why would we change our enrollment cap down in case some, you know, development comes along or there's additional interest, or we can't read what's happening in the municipality we reside in? So we leave it where it is. But to me, there is no enrollment problem unless the school is unable to balance its revenues and expenses and offer a program that's much like, or, you know, has evolved to something that has been part of an amendment and therefore is like the program they're saying they're offering. So I don't think an enrollment problem is a very compelling statement unless it can be tied to the financial health of the school. So, you know, if you're at 69.9% enrollment, I don't really care if your financial health is robust. So anyway, I just want to put that out there. If a school has good financial health and wants another 50 students and is, you know, decently aligning with the district and performing, you know, decently, I just don't see why there would be a reason to deny these requests.
Thank you. Member Olson?
Follow up. So in view of these applications, going to Vice Chair Phillips' comment, have we performed an evaluation to ensure that each of these schools is in good financial health?
Yes, all of these schools are in good financial health. We don't currently have any of these schools on a notice of concern or a warning, so they're all doing well financially and are meeting all of the standards from USBE. As I mentioned, a few of them had some things they were working on. However, in speaking with the different departments here at USBE, they all ultimately agreed that these schools are in good standing with them as well.
I have a couple of questions to ask. Like, there are four applications, at least if I'm counting, that are from Washington County, so St. George Hurrican, right? You tell I'm from Utah, I said Hurrican. And, but I have a couple of questions, like Freedom Prep, you talked about that across Freedom Prep Academy's campuses, they're at 69.6%, how much in just the St. George campus, because that's where our focus is for this application, for this expansion? Can someone, maybe someone from Freedom Prep can help me with that? So, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, going over the numbers in Ucap, that's a little bit low, if the division, if I did my math right, that 69.9% is a little bit on the low side. However, Freedom's been around 20 years. We've gone through, Member Phillips hit it on the head, there was a time when you had to hold your students, otherwise you couldn't get them. And looking on our allotted amount, we have 2,810 students available for Freedom Prep to expand to. Our buildings will not hold that. So if we brought that down to more manageable weight, we're going to be in the 90%. So that number through the past 20 years, plus we had to sign some Schedule A or something a couple of years ago, and it, I think we actually might have some double allotted students to Freedom Prep. Now, in St. George, we have 296 students enrolled today. I think we're authorized for 400. Thank you COVID for slowing us down a little bit, but we're there. And so the students, the parents who want it, we have 28 fifth graders this year alone. We had 25 last year that wanted to come to a sixth grade this year but weren't able to. That's kind of where our basis is.
Okay, and adding that grade level.
Sir, before we go forward, can I ask for your names and your positions, please?
Yes, Chris Helby, Director of Finance.
And Buddy Ivy, I'm the Director of Operations.
And then we have Lynn Herring, Executive Director, and our board chairs online.
Thank you, that helps me with that question. Other questions for Freedom Prep, anyone needs to ask right now?
We are K-12, so we're okay on doing any of the expansions all the way up.
Thank you. I just was curious about that campus particularly, just so we're talking apples to apples, really. So thank you so much. I also want to ask just for me to know, New Ames, for example, New Ames opened with two campuses, in Davis and in Weber. The Weber campus did not sustain after a couple of years, but I understand in the last year or two, the last year or two, New Ames added the Weber campus back, and the Davis campus is on the Davis-Weber State University campus, but they've added Weber again, right? Go ahead, Member Spiker, go ahead.
Oh, that's right, we just have to move it, is that it? Okay. Please come on, I was just, I am a professor at Weber State, so that's the only reason I have a little bit more in-depth knowledge about the school, but I think it would be better for them to respond. I apologize, I was just, that was my brain thinking out loud.
That's all right. What my-
Campus is one on Weber State-Davis.
Yeah.
And we occupy the NORDA Engineering Building.
On the Weber State campus.
In fact, that's why the NORDA building was approved to be built, was because we signed the lease and the operating and maintenance agreement.
But that adding back was only in the last couple of years, right? How long ago? I helped to start New Ames, that's why I'm saying-
You sure did.
So we have 1,175 current students at New Ames, so between the two campuses. So the North campus has just shy of 500, and the campus in Davis is about 736 right now.
Which-
Yeah. So the problem-
Pleases me honestly, but yeah, go ahead.
The reason why the North campus was open is our waiting list was so long at the Davis campus, you had a 50% chance of getting in. And actually, we were approached to say, how can you guys serve more students? You can't turn away that many students each year. And so that's when we came through the old process and presented the opening of the North campus.
Yeah, wonderful, which is tremendous. I didn't even get to my question yet, but what I was going to ask is, is this expansion more for the Davis campus or for the Weber campus?
So maybe what's different about our expansion is this is a response to COVID and the learning loss in math to COVID, so it would be for the Davis campus. It would be more in response to the Davis campus.
All right, that's what-
But we're finding the math levels coming in are so low for 10th grade, but if they'll stay with us, by the end of their 11th grade, we've been able to bring those students' math levels back to pre-COVID levels for New Ames. So then the idea is, wow, how much more could we work with if we brought them by the end of their 10th grade back up to those levels?
Can I ask your names and your positions, please?
Yes, Kelly Booth, Executive Director of New Ames.
Susan Johnson, I'm Board Chair.
So the hope is then add to that Davis campus in ninth grade to help them, if they can stay with you, that time you can get them back up. And for folks to know, of course, that is that model, hopefully, to have associates greet by the time they conclude, and if their math levels are low, that obviously is a problem. And so to try to get that point, this is part, one of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation original-
Early College High School.
Yeah, Early College High Schools, as Member Cisneros has been engaged in one of those as well, so, yeah, thank you, that helps me. I'm pleased, I'd just like to continue to follow the history of the school because I am interested too, thank you.
No, we remediate our incoming students in math the summer before they start, if they need, and that's been since the very beginning. However, we're seeing the need for more rigorous intervention at an earlier grade.
Yeah, understandable, thank you. Go ahead.
And the other part is our sister LEA schools with the other ECAs that exist in the state of Utah that were accredited through the governor's office, actually. They've all reported success with adding ninth grade and that it has made a big difference in adding that.
Not accredited through the governor's office, they were-
Approved, started. They start, what makes the early college schools different is they started out of the governor's office, they didn't start out anywhere else.
Actually, not exactly right, but I'll give you the history sometime, because-
I would like that history.
Because Mike Jacobson and I actually wrote the charter, so, for New Ames, so I'll tell you some of that sometime, yeah.
I would love that. But also, it should be noted too, that like New Ames historically for the last decade has easily been one of the highest performing schools in the state of Utah.
Right.
And our desire is to really focus and be able to continue to produce graduates that are prepared in math, science, and engineering is our focus, and we're seeing that math coming in is just, it needs to be pushed a little higher.
Tremendous, and thank you so much for being careful about that and taking that step. Thank you so much. I don't have any other questions of New Ames, anyone else? Mostly mine's were curiosity questions and to see what-
So I have a question for Stephanie Spencer. So you're a professor at Weber State, so you're aware that our students are on your campus?
Yes, I have actually taught them numerous times in my courses. I teach in teacher ed and then I- I teach in teacher ed and then also in our Women and Gender Studies Program. So the courses in the Women and Gender Studies Program I teach are part of our general ed program, and so, yes, over the years, and that's, Chair Bowles, my apologies, it was just, I'm thinking of the, I've probably had students for the last five years, so I don't know exactly the length of time that New Ames has been on the North campus, I just know from my own tenure there that I've consistently every year had New Ames students, and I will say, 90% of the time, they outperform our typical freshmen.
Which is wonderful, yeah.
You know, the move to the North campus has been remarkable in a lot of ways. Last year, we had 36% minority population overall in our school amongst all students. We have 70-plus students for whom English is not our first language. We've increased our special ed enrollment dramatically, and yet, our ACT last year was, you know, 25.1 at the Davis campus and-
Yeah, so great. The reason I ask that mostly is because it did start with two campuses initially, but the Weber campus went away for a while.
It started with trailers behind Davis Tech and at the I Omega, abandoned I Omega Administrative Building, and when we moved on to the Weber State-Davis campus, truthfully, I'm not sure we would have survived because our teachers were living out of the trunks of their cars. It was just a completely different time than it is now.
Yeah, and a lot of that was, we could give credit to now Senator Milner, but then President Milner at Weber State University, who really made that happen, yeah. Wonderful, thank you so much. Any other questions for New Ames folks, anyone? Thank you so much, thank you for the good work that you do, and we know it's one of our high, very high-performing schools in the state as well. Are you?
Yes.
You're done? I want to ask one other question. So for that, with Vanguard, I want to ask a question about, we, we know that Vanguard has now some articulation agreements, but have those, have they started those articulation agreements yet? Or is that still coming up? I'm just curious where you are in the process of the, of the articulation agreements, because if they haven't all, you haven't experienced that yet, obviously the enrollment, you're going to have that enrollment coming, right?
Thank you for your question, Chair Bowles. My name's Charles Reynolds, the Executive Director of Vanguard Academy, and here with me, I've got Joy Palmer, one of our founding members, and our Curriculum Director, and then also Debbie Llewellyn, are one of our board members. One thing I might mention is with the enrollment numbers that were presented on the slides, they're actually comparing last year's enrollment. We actually had an increase in our enrollment this year, which has not yet been reported with the October 1 count, is actually just over 103%. And we do have a waitlist. You asked about the, the articulation agreement with Endeavor Hall right now. We did get one applicant from them, but as of right now, that applicant is still on our waitlist because we actually have employee priority applicants that did not get off of our waitlist and did not get in.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, that answers my question. Others have? All right, thank you so much Vanguard, thank you for the work you do, and Vice Chair Phillips said she was ready for-
Motion, yeah. I would like to move that we approve the small expansion application requests that have been presented to us today. Do they need to be listed by name?
I think that we can just indicate that they're on the, those that appear on the agenda today that we've reviewed is enough. All right, so there is a motion from Vice Chair Phillips to approve all of the, the small expansion requests that have been presented to us today. Is there a second to that motion?
I jumped again and seconded before.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I would like to second that.
And Member Smith, seconds. Any further discussion about those? We've had some, that was a good discussion in talking about those. Go ahead, Member Cisneros.
I am in support of the motion, so I'm not going to hold it up, but I would ask, because I don't feel like Member Olson's question was adequately addressed, and I feel like maybe some of my questions are still not resolved, but I wonder if it's an appropriate task for the authorizing committee to take up, not to hold these applications up, but so that in the future, we have clearly defined standards for the board to operate around, staff to operate around, and us not come into meetings with unresolved questions.
Thank you so much for that comment, and let's make that, I'll make that direction to, Mrs. Snar, Mrs. Snaros is on that committee member. Olson is on that committee, and, no?
Crystal, Michelle, and Eric.
All right, those who are on the committee who know who they are, and if Ms. Stephenson will make sure that that's on the agenda, because I know that you helped to organize that for the board, that committee and set agenda.
Can I make a comment to the discussion?
Yes, please.
In general, with these small expansions, the, as we've brought them, the new process recently to law and licensing of the State Board of Ed, there has been more of a sense, and I think that there was more of a sense on this board, and so perhaps that has changed and maybe needs to be discussed with authorizing and amending. But the idea with these small expansions, I think, was because they're small, that the application, it contained more potential to, that in order not to be considered, you had to have significant disqualifications rather than qualifications. Now, that isn't as true, I think, with the large expansion and satellite processes, but as the, I would, I would recommend, and of course, I'm just one board member, that the authorizing and amending committee take that into consideration, that there is a significant difference between a satellite request and a large expansion and these smaller requests, which, again, we've typically been leaning toward, why not give them unless there's some huge looming thing? And so, I think this personally, that the standards discussion is better suited to the large expansions and the satellite requests.
As a, like a point of record, right, that we, we generally do take that philosophy, we would like to encourage these, especially since they're not burdensome, and as long as the schools are in good standing, which they are before we bring them to you, I mean, that functionally is the vetting process. We don't, we won't bring them to you if they are, have major cause for concern, and we do definitely scrutinize the larger expansion requests much more closely.
Thank you, thank you. If in that committee you'll consider it, and then just maybe come and report what you, what your determination was in this, we continue forward. We have a motion on the table then, to approve the, these requests that have been presented to us today, a motion and a second, any additional discussion about that motion? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve these requests, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Carrie, unanimously, congratulations all of you. We thank you for the great work you're doing, and it really is a good problem to want to add students, that's a good problem, so go and have fun. Thank you so much, thank you. Thank you. All right. We have now an item, American Principals Academy Application Review and Feedback. You'll remember that this was something that we did, that this was something that we have, have a waiver to our normal process in order to expedite this, something that we need to, do you need to begin, Ms. Stephenson, anything you wanted to add to it first, or do we need to? Go ahead.
I'm happy to let you introduce it, any additional things, but if you're ready for us to start the work group feedback report, we're ready whenever you are.
Go ahead, we're ready.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Board, for your consideration of that last item, and now we're excited to talk about American Principals Academy. Just a few reminders of their key details. This school is hoping to be located in Cedar City and will ultimately serve grades K through 12, however, in their application, they are simply starting as a K through 9. This school also, in their application, had the temporary facility for three years before they would seek to move into a more permanent facility. Also, it was indicated that their max enrollment would be 1,089 students, however, they are starting with 300, and the lines within the application where they could share that growth plan for the next three years only indicated the 300 students. So that may be an additional item that you would want to ask about, what that growth plan looks like. Currently, if approved, they would have 30 students per grade for K through 9. As Chair Bowles mentioned, our timeline with this is a little different. We typically are reviewing our new school applications in January, and so, a quick refresher as to why this is here today, is that this application is seeking a waiver. And as we talked with them and discussed what that waiver was for, it ultimately falls under Board Rule 277552-3, which is the charter school authorization process. As you know, our process has been approved by the USBE, and that included the times when we would review applications and, and provide feedback and, you know, be in compliance with our process. And so because this is outside of that typical process, it was determined that they would need a waiver. The school feels like there's a real estate opportunity that will expire if they stick to our typical timeline. We did want to put up here just what the timeline moving forward, if they were authorized today, would be, so beginning with, if that vote was affirmative to authorize them, that would occur today, and then the biggest piece on here, it's in red, is making sure that by October 1, that USBE has been notified, and so that was part of why it had to come before the board today for that review. There are a few different moving pieces here that we want to talk about within that timeline. If approved today, then their waiver request would also need to be approved by the USBE, so we are anticipating that in October, it would go to law and licensing, and November is when there would be a waiver from the full USBE board. As you can see there, I highlighted that, that is one potential area of concern. If the USBE does not approve their waiver, then we would need to discuss what happens with this approval, what timeline does that put them on, what would occur next? The other items there that I highlighted were also just elements that are out of the normal lineup of what needs to happen, and we may want to discuss that with the school. So the next one is then that signed charter agreement in place. We typically try to get that done as soon as possible after approval, but even that, with the negotiations and bringing it to the board typically takes a few months, and so, one concern that we have, and we brought this up, was that the startup funds have already been, begun to be dispersed for schools that are opening in the fall of '24. And so, at this point, they would be behind in that dispersment schedule, and until that signed agreement is in place, we are unable to notify USBE that this dispersment needs to go out. And so depending on how long that takes to get a signed charter agreement in place may or may not be a cause for potential concern, and also recognizing that once we give that notice to USBE that we're ready for a dispersment, it does typically take a few months, as the school has to also set up their federal numbers and their state numbers and their accounts, so that they can actually receive those funds. Some of the items are already on the typical schedule, such as their readiness to open packet absolutely has to begin no later than January 1st, so we would make sure they had that and were aware of all of those milestones. You can see the March, April, and May is when those milestones are reviewed, and then May is ultimately when our board reviews their readiness to open, so they would be on track with all of that. The only other item there that is still highlighted is the pre-operational training. Again, the schools that are opening in the fall of '24 have already been through six months of pre-operational training, helping with contracting and purchasing and legal and sped services, you know, all sorts of topics that are provided by our third-party vendors, and so we would also want to likely address, how do we catch up those six months of pre-operational training that they would be missing out on? As for the work group, our work group was comprised of employees from both the State Board of Education as well as the State Charter School Board, and we tasked the work group with five different questions to answer. And so on the next slides, I will be going through these questions and what the work group came up with as far as the answers that they saw, and hopefully that can help guide this review, and may or may not be additional questions that you would like to ask the school as well. The first question that we asked after they had reviewed the application sufficiently was, could this be as successful public charter school as outlined? According to the work group, the answer was split between yes and no. Those that thought yes felt like there's a really well-defined direction for this school model, while those who thought no mentioned that the execution of the school in the way that it was described within the application may be too expensive to run in this location. There were concerns both about the enrollment of 300, making sure that they had qualified paraprofessionals in the school, and there were some concerns within the budget that was submitted that we'll get onto in another slide, that may be a cause for some concern as far as the expenses it'll take to run this model. Another concern that was brought up by the work group, for those that thought no here, was that the charter management organization, or CMO, the agreement includes multiple services. Now with that, that is certainly allowable, and we have charter schools that use CMOs in a number of robust ways. Just as the work group was meeting and talking about that, there was some concern about how many services are being provided by the CMO. There was a note from the USBE team about the corrective action plan that Director Charet also referenced today, it sounds like from her report, that that has been resolved. When the team met and discussed this, they had said that it was going through a settlement process and anticipated that being resolved very soon, so I don't have the details on that, but I'm sure we could get them if needed as far as what that outcome was there. The next question that we tasked the work group to answer was if the governing board of the school appears to have the capacity to fulfill all that is written in their application. Again, the work group was split here between yes and no. Those who thought yes felt that the board had made changes from their composition from last year's submission, and in reviewing the application, this was cited by the applicant as the reason that it wasn't approved last year and that they needed to revamp and come back this year. Looking through some of our notes, we saw that there were some other concerns that the board had brought up last year besides just the board composition related to the charter management company and related to the desires and needs within the area, and so that may be something you want to consider asking them about, since there were some issues that were unaddressed that were brought up from last year. Those who thought no from the work group as their answer to this question, felt that there were some questions about the financial stewardship that the board had the capacity to provide, and that the board has authorized others to act on their behalf. And so I'd like to dive a little deeper into both of those issues and just provide some additional context. The financial stewardship concerns that came up in the application were that the applicant, first of all, did not account for all of their expenses. Two different areas that were noted by the work group were that there was a $25,000 down payment on a building that was discussed but not reflected within the budget, and so that $25,000 was not accounted for within their budgeting. Another example of that came under their food service. Food service was listed as a revenue item that would be bringing in a significant amount of revenue for a school, and yet, the only expense that was related to their food service was for two employees. On the line items where they would actually purchase the food or purchase the supplies to make the food, those both had a spending plan of zero. And so making sure that this financial stewardship, that they are aware of all of the items that- that will need to be procured and provided to run the school that they're envisioning. Another financial stewardship concern was that in the break-even budget, there was no reserve balance or carryforward. Typically, we ask schools to try to have about a 5% there, recognizing that a break-even budget, you know, they are trying to operate on less at that point, but their break-even budget did come out to exactly zero. And so that may be another concern that the board would like to address. And then the third item is that in the startup fund, the startup grant application, we give the applicants a little table that shows what their funding amounts will be and kind of a very small way for us to begin assessing that ability to read these documents and have those financial stewardship conversations. We did find that they had some incorrect calculations for both year two and three in the startup funds that did overinflate their budget from what they would actually be receiving. And so that is something that if they are approved, staff will continue to work with them and make sure that they are able to read, interpret, and use those documents correctly. The other item that had been brought up was that the governing board, since this is that question about does the board have this capacity, is authorizing a lot of their duties or responsibilities out. And so we wanted to just kind of talk a little bit about that, especially in regards to working with charter management organizations. As I'm sure the board knows, charter management organizations are allowable and can really provide a lot of value and service to the schools that they work with. But there are two key questions that we try to look at and that you may want to consider. And so the first one would be a school that has a contract for services but that the school could continue to operate without a CMO. Some examples of this might be if you hired a company that was providing your technical support in running your internet or a company that's doing your payroll for you. Those things typically a school could change and use a different technical service provider, a different payroll provider, and the school could continue to operate without that CMO or with making a change. And then the other side of that is a contract for services that the school could not continue to operate without their CMO. So this would be one where branding and curriculum and supplies and, you know, everything really belongs to that charter management organization. And so that would be a question for the board to consider as far as what type of CMOs you are comfortable working with and are comfortable having schools work with, recognizing that both are allowable. We did put a little graphic here at the bottom. This is just a question that we've been grappling with and working with AAG Olson on, which relates to when does a school make a decision to contract with a charter management organization, and can a charter management organization be material to the authorization of a charter school? And ultimately, we've come up with this graphic. Right now, an applicant is considered private, so they could work with anyone they want and have that help, have that support. However, if they are authorized, they suddenly become a public entity. And so the question there is what happens to those prior agreements? Do they need to rebid? Are they able to keep them because it is material to their charter? And so that is likely a question that our board will want to discuss and grapple with as well. Oh, before I get into this, I should also note, the applicant is aware that we've been having this conversation and discussion, and under the direction of our leadership team, they were asked to be, you know, transparent about what that looks like, what they're planning. And so the applicant was extremely transparent within their application about what their contract would look like with their charter management organization and actually provided a sample agreement. And so that's what I wanted to show next and just highlight a few different items that, again, as the board, you may want to ask questions about or may want to gain some additional insight on. And as that reference, this all falls under that category of board capacity. And so we're looking at it with that board capacity lens. Within their agreement, it is noted that the school receives that authority from the authorizer. And throughout this agreement with the CMO, the school, instead of being referenced as American Principals Academy, is referenced as CCH, which is Cedar Charter Holders, who within the application is the name of the applicant where American Principals Academy is the name of the school. You'll see on that second one where it says number three, authority, it says that CCH, so Cedar Charter Holdings or American Principals Academy, the board, grants to APS, which would be the CMO, express authority and power necessary to execute their duties. And then it also talks about their responsibilities, their obligations. However, they have provided, in that next little underlined section there, that if it is something that the board is not able to delegate their authority of, then the governing board of CCH or American Principals Academy would still retain that authority. So they have tried to point out that, you know, while this applicant may be giving some of that authority over to their CMO, if there are places that's not allowable, that that authority still resides with the school. In that next one, where it talks about the relationship between the school and the CMO, they have outlined that no employees of APS will be considered an employee of CCH. So the CMO employees are not considered employees of the school. However, as required in their management of schools, APS may supervise CCH employees. And so this was noted as just a possible concern from the work group that suddenly if there are non-employees supervising employees of a school, that may make those conversations challenging or cause some cultural concerns within the school culture. A few other items here. You can see at the top one that CCH, so American Principals Academy and the Cedar Charter Holdings, that same group, authorizes APS staff to open and maintain depository accounts. And it outlines what that's for. They also say that their APS employees are expressly charged with fiduciary responsibility for all of the school funds and are authorized as signatories on checking accounts. They did name who that would be, and so it is, you know, not every APS employee, but certain ones that are listed here. They've also said that those employees are authorized to enter into contracts and agreements with third parties for the procurement of goods and services on behalf of CCH. And then that bottom one there, before we get into the second section, mentions that APS is authorized to make expenditures with CCH funds in excess of $50,000. It does outline what items that specifically would be for, but again, if we're talking about board capacity, the work group had that concern that their purchasing power or their authorization of what they're going to spend has been given to their charter management organization. This bottoms piece here, related back to that previous slide where it talked about APS employees supervising CCH employees, and it mentions here that APS will provide executive-level personnel to manage the business, compliance, and academic oversight of the school. So again, they were very clear and transparent about that, that this is where their executive leadership will come from. That was, though, a concern within the work group that as a governing board, typically a governing board would like to hire their own executive and task them with some of those oversight roles. However, this is what they're putting forward. Again, this is considered allowable, and it's very transparent within their application. They have also stated that if there are things that need to change within this agreement that it's not finalized, you can see the draft watermark across the back there. So if there are places that the board would like to provide guidance or suggestions to the applicant, it sounds like they are open to that. This last part here, page, or item seven within that agreement, talks about the fulfillment of the charter obligations. And multiple lines talk about APS working to fulfill the obligations of their charter. And item D there talks about how if CCH, so Cedar Charter Holders, which is American Principals Academy, if they would like to make any adjustments to their charter agreement that is held between their board and you as the board, they do have a line in there that it first needs to be submitted to APS for review before it would come to the authorizer. And so again, this may be a concern about that relationship between a school governing board and an authorizer that you would want to ask some questions and get some clarity on. We also saw on item 24 there about licensing, that CCH, so Cedar Charter Holders as American Principals Academy, may use the American Preparatory name, brand, symbols, acronyms, and any and all other intellectual property and copyrights in labeling, marketing, and any other capacity. And so when we saw that, we know that was a question brought up last year about if this is a new school or a satellite and how it will be run. And so again, just drawing attention to those different pieces of their potential agreement with their charter management company. Under that line that was found in section 24, the work group did have some concerns that, you know, they first thought, well, why is American Preparatory Academy advertising for this school? But then finding that line in 24 where the charter management organization has given that ability to American Principals Academy, acting as Cedar Charter Holders, to use their name and their logo, it made sense now why we were seeing this. You can see that the first picture up there, that is the little flyer, these were actually passed out in Cedar City and do reference American Principals Academy. But then if you go to American Preparatory Academy's webpage, and it's americanprep.org, under that dropdown menu, it does show the Cedar City campus as one of the schools listed within the campuses of American Preparatory Academy. And if you click into that, it does have its own landing page with Cedar City coming in fall of 2024. Again, this may be something you want to ask questions about, or you might already feel comfortable with them being given that ability from their charter management organization. And we do appreciate the transparency and the thought that they put into their agreement and sharing that with our board today as directed. Back to our work group, they were asked if they had any remaining questions or concerns after reading, and these remaining questions and concerns all really related to that charter management organization document and some of the things they were seeing within the website. They wanted to make sure that they were really clear on what the relationship with American Preparatory Academy is, since they will likely be using their name and logo and intellectual property. And then just to echo those two questions that we already brought up, what role does a CMO play in the material authorization of a public charter school? And that other question, could the school exist without the CMO? And based on the agreement that's in place, you know, could the school exist and continue to function and thrive if the CMO was to change? The next question that was asked, as we reviewed with our USBE and SCSP work group, was, is there any part of the application that does not align with board rules, state statutes, or federal laws? Overall, the consensus here was no. The application appears to be in compliance with board rules, state statutes, and federal laws. However, there may want to be some discussion around that material authorization and where that fits in for this school. The final question that was asked to the work group was, if the decision was left up to them, would they approve the application to become a public charter school? And ultimately, no one in the work group was a clear and easy yes. 75% of the work group was yes, but with some caveats, and 25% of the work group was a no. The caveats we listed out here on the side, one of the people said, I would vote yes, but only after clear guidance was given regarding CMOs being material to authorization. And once they said that, everyone kind of nodded their heads and agreed there. The next one was, I would vote yes, but not until the APA settlement has occurred. Well, and depending on the outcome. Again, it sounds like that may have already happened between the creation of this slide and that meeting until today, and so that may be a moot point at this time. The next one, they said, I would vote yes, but not until an accurate budget has been presented, again, wanting to make sure that the board had adequate financial stewardship of the school and of the public funds that they will be operating with. And then the last one, they said, I would vote yes if I felt confident this was a new school and not a satellite. Everyone agreed that there really is a compelling case that Cedar City needs a classical model charter. But again, it was still unclear to the work group if this is truly just a satellite that's given the ability to use the APA name and logo and items of intellectual property, or if this truly is a new school contracting with a charter management organization to provide similar services. So the question that the work group came away from in asking, you know, if there's any recommendations or advice you would give to our board, was to really consider if those caveats are addressable, and are they addressable by these three things, which would be, are they addressable by the model that the school is putting forward? Are they addressable by this specific governing board? And are they addressable within the requested timeframe, remembering that if approved today, they are on a shortened timeframe where they are jumping in about six months late into the process? And so that was the recommendation from our work group to really, hopefully, have our board address today is, are those concerns addressable and can they be addressed in an adequate manner? So with that, back to our key details. Again, Cedar City, a K-12 that's going to start as a K-9, a max enrollment of over 1,000 that would start with 300, and we're happy to have you discuss and ask questions that you have to the school. The school does have representatives here today, and I believe they are all in person. We would also like to draw your attention to your second document here. It has potential questions you may want to ask. Of course, we recognize that our board has wonderful thoughts and rigor and great discussions often when talking with schools, but if you would like some suggested questions, the first page were some that you may want to assign to each other and go over. Of course, we will leave that up to our board's discretion there. And then the second page just has some possible questions for additional clarity. The majority of those additional questions did come from the work group, and as we were putting together the presentation, the thought was that on the slide that asks if you had additional questions, we wanted to focus on the biggest questions that came up. And so the questions that are listed here from the work group are less of a big question, more just some wonderings or some questions that the work group still had but did not feel as large as what was in the presentation as far as those remaining questions. That concludes my presentation, Chair Bowles. If there are any questions, I'm happy to address those, and otherwise, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. From the board, any additional questions for Ms. Stephenson before we call the group forward? Member Olson?
Thanks, Chair. Not a question for Ms. Stephenson. I just wanted to state on the record that based on the school's express affiliation with APS, I won't be participating in the discussion or vote on this application today.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I also want to recognize that Deputy Superintendent Stallings has joined us, and we're happy to have her here with us. She always adds to our discussion and the work we do. Individuals from American Principals Academy, you've traveled a distance, travel a little bit more and come and sit up to the table with us, and then I'll have you introduce yourselves as we begin. yourselves as we begin. Do we have enough seats for everyone? Good. All right. You just have to pull the mic forward and start to talk, and it will light up for you. Would you mind each introducing yourselves, please?
I'm on the end, Chairman, so I guess I'll go. I'm Stephanie Hill, and I'm the newest member of the board. I'm actually on the Iron County School Board. I'm a 27-year veteran high school teacher, having taught 25 years at the nationally-ranked Advanced Technologies Academy. I, in fact, did not teach the technologies, but Spanish and English. I'm current, I was appointed by the governor in 2020 to be on the UDDC. I'm currently, I was just renewed for a second term. I am now the Subcommittee Chair of Community Access and Support. My own son, who is 19 years old, having recently graduated from Cedar High School, was afflicted and still carries some traits of autism. I was deeply invested in advocating for disability rights at the Nevada Legislature over about a 10-year period. So I was especially delighted to hear that the cap was removed, because I'm one of those moms, along with being a teacher. Anyway, thank you, Chairman, Board. It's a pleasure and an honor to be with you here today.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
I am Kelly Hoffling. This is my second time on the board. I just got appointed as Vice Chair now, so, yep.
Excellent.
Casey Anderson, I'm the Chair of the Board. In my previous capacity, when we met last year, I was a rehabilitation counselor for the state of Utah. Since then, there's been a change. I'm now an administrative officer for a company. We have 300 employees, and my primary position is to deal with auditing, regulatory compliance, and HR issues that are always a joy to deal with, so.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kami Merrill. I serve as the Secretary of this Board, my second time back as well, and happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Matt Howard, the Treasurer. I've lived in Cedar City for 10 years now with my family. I've got six children, and I'm also really excited to be here.
Excellent. Thank you. Start, and it will go, it will start.
My name is Blaine Hoffling. That one's not set up.
Ah-ha. There we go. That one is.
It wasn't just me, was it?
[laughing].
My name is Blaine Hoffling. I'm an attorney. I have a background in education that goes back a little ways. I represented the Iron County School District for 15 years or so, including the launch of Success. So it was during that time that they launched Success. Some time ago, wanting to get out of the practice of law, I started a company that now has 140 employees across several platforms. One of those platforms is a private school that is accredited by Cognia. And as of this morning, we received our special ed designation or certificate. So we're really excited about that. So I've got a little experience in the laws affecting education, and obviously contracts and things like that.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing that mic back and forth, the two of you, as you need. We appreciate it, and I want to point out to our board that that means that their full board is here with us today and present. So it shows their commitment to this school. So now I'll turn time to board members to ask questions and things that you are interested in knowing as you make a decision whether or not to approve this school on this short timeline. Short timeline, we, even though we know it feels like to you a long timeline, but it's short as far as the approval process. All right. Vice Chair Phillips, did you want to launch?
Yes, I think I do.
All right.
So thank you so much for all being here, and we've, it's been compelling to hear about your story and the interest that there is in Cedar City for this school and for this model and for this curriculum. One of the things that I'm also pleased about is that you've been transparent about your relationship or potential relationship with a CMO and a specific CMO. One of the things that I'm struggling to understand, and I'm hoping more that A.G. Olson or others on the board who are more expert in this area could help me understand, a couple of things make me feel okay about the relationship between the CMO and the school. One is that it seems to me to be contractual between two nonprofits. It seems to me to be transparent. Boards can dissolve, boards, if they're not conflicted, can dissolve contracts for cause or at the end of a term or so forth, they can go in another direction. And it seems to me that not only is there precedent for our schools to be models that are, that when we have authorized schools in the past, they have used CMOs. Sometimes those CMOs just provide business management. Other times, those CMOs provide the same kinds of services we're seeing reflected in this contract. And in some ways, I think it creates an economy of scale and for the, for the school, especially if it's small, it's very expensive to run a school administratively, and economies of scale can be provided by a CMO. And so it actually is maybe a good thing for a small school at times. And then also, if that CMO, which is not always the case, has proprietary intellectual property that you want to use, it makes sense to me to enter into a contract that allows you to use it. And when we ask the question, could this school exist without it? Well, not this school the way it would look, that is to say, with its logo and with its specific proprietary curriculum, but it certainly exists and adopts something else. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the question should be asked so much, would it be this school without this CMO? No, it would not, but would it still be a school? Could it still, could the board go in another direction? Could the board adopt a different curriculum and sort of pedagogical model? Yes. I mean, assuming they were financially healthy and could do so. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, there's clearly a precedent for our schools to do these things. Now, if we say, can they do this before they are authorized? Yes, they're private, they can. Does the long arm of the law go back to that relationship and disallow it once they're authorized with public monies? I don't know. We haven't imposed that in the past on others. We've talked about it, but it doesn't seem to be illegal. But then we have to ask the question too, you know, in terms of things like procurement of pedagogy and curriculum, we don't require that of schools. However, we do require procurement for things like business management. So this is a kind of a sticky, little gnarly thing here, but my feeling would be, if it's transparent, if the board can walk away from it because they're not conflicted, and so they have control over the resources and monies of the organization, if they determine to walk away at some point in the future. I guess my only concern would be then, is if there needs to be some kind of legal process after they would be authorized that would, that would need to ensue for us to feel that state procurement laws had been followed. And so I know that was a very long lead-up to a question, but I have confidence in you, A.G. Olson. Help me out here.
I don't know that I can help you out the way you want to be helped, but...
Well, I just don't know what that means.
But I can give you some ideas. I don't know all the details of this case. But as far as any agreements that a private entity may have going into this application process, I think if this board had concerns with those, whether it be procurement laws or however, I think that could be made part of the charter agreement that was ultimately entered into. Looking at this case, one of the concerns that I have, it's a little different than your question, it appears to me, and I may be misunderstanding it, because it's the first time I'm hearing this, or at least I'm understanding this is the proposal, it looks like there's a desire to have the school, the whole school run by this CMO. This, I can't remember now the name, they're going to call it American Principals Academy, but it's not, it's not being run by the applicant. It's not, the applicant has the executive authority to, you know, as far as the board over, you know, governing it, but you've got, but the CMO is actually hiring all the employees, including directors, staff, employees. And they seem to be doing the whole thing, as well as providing the intellectual property, like you point out, that creates the branding of the school. And the concern that I have is, and I haven't thought through this all the way, and that's why I don't know that I can answer your question yet, but there's more than being able to, I mean, the question is, can you delegate all of your statutory obligations to a CMO? There are statutory obligations that the applicant has under the charter agreement that where the charter school's been granted, even to the point like if the school got to the point of doing bonding or other statutory obligations that they have, I don't know that they can, that they can delegate those statutory obligations, and that's something that the board should think through. And I haven't thought through that to be able to tell you. But typically, you don't have that authority to delegate statutory obligations. I also want to point out, this is not addressing your question, but I have an email that was sent, and here again, I'm just, I'm going to just say from the email, because I don't know all the answers on this either, but I'm asked to advise that the board, advise you that the status of the USBE, what are we saying here? The, what's, well, the APA has received notification that they are on a cap for non-compliance with APAL, and I'm not sure what APAL is.
Teacher licensing.
APAL. That's something that you might ask, want to ask the school about, and I don't know what that involves. So I don't know what to, I'm just being a messenger on that point.
Absolutely, please.
So, I'm going to be honest.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, though, for that information. I know that this school is planning to enter into a contractual obligation or contract for certain services and so on, and intellectual property use and curriculum and model with the same management company that APA, as in American Preparatory Academy, is managed by. I'm sure I said that sentence wrong, because I was thinking about what APA stands for in each of these cases. But, but I'll be honest, you know, I'm not sure how that legally concerns this conversation, because this is a different group of board members coming to us, asking for a, for a, an authorization of a charter school, who then will enter into a contract with a management system, a CMO, that, for certain services, as well as for proprietary model and curriculum and intellectual property. So it is a different group of people. It's not the same group of people legally. It's not the same group of people who've started the 501(c)(3) that is coming before us. And I'm not sure that in contracting those services, they are in fact relinquishing their statutory obligation. I don't think you can ever do that, and you can't certainly do it contractually. So they are contractually saying, we don't want to hire everybody, we want you to do it, it's a big job. And we do have schools all over the place in our state who contract those same services from other management companies, because they don't want to do it either. And then there are other schools that contract part of those services from various organizations or from other organizations that aren't full CMOs, business management and other things. And even, even when they contract business management services, the board still does not relinquish its fiduciary duty and everything else. They're just asking other people, not themselves, to do it. So I just want to make sure we're talking about the relevant things, and I don't know all the answers to the questions, but, but I, I don't, I don't understand, it doesn't seem to me that APA, meaning American Preparatory Academy, or the CMO that runs those schools, is a part of the conversation here, except for whether or not this 501(c)(3) that's come before us, which has, which is anticipating a contract with the same CMO, is doing anything illegal, unprecedented, or in some other adjective that would cause us not to consider them because of it? That's what I don't know.
So, yeah, go ahead.
Again, being the messenger on this, this APAL, where it said that it applies here because the management company, their website says they employ the teachers, and that's where the company's employing the teachers.
I can address that, actually. So the APAL program is an alternative pathway to professional educator licensing, and it's where any LEA, including charter LEAs, districts can apply to the USBE under a very prescriptive template to run within their organizations. Sometimes they're run through consortia like NOOSE and CUSE and so on in our state that can run a program that allows someone, once they've obtained an associate educator license, which is a very low gate, to then kind of shepherd and supervise these would-be professional license holders, you can teach with this lower license, but to a professional license. And usually that entails having these individuals take courses from SUU or Salt Lake Community College, or even courses that have been developed within the LEA, although most LEAs don't have the bandwidth to do that, and they contract that out to these, to the universities and so on. And so what happens is, when the educator with the AEL license has fulfilled all the requirements, you have an, including the testing, including the clinical experiences and so on, you as the APAL holder, which is a program holder, apply and recommend an individual to professional licensure. And the USBE has the opportunity, obligation at that point, to deny that and tell you why, or to allow it and say, yes, this person has professional license. There have been a number of APAL programs that have been audited in the past little while, who have been, that have been found lacking. In defense of those APAL programs, I'll suggest that the APAL program requirements change almost on a monthly basis, and it's very difficult to know what you as an LEA are required to do from month to month for your candidates. So for me personally, having them have a little bit of a hiccup in their APAL program is in no way an indictment. But that's one board member's opinion.
Thank you. Let's just follow board members, if you will, let's just follow that list that you have as far as order, and then you ask whatever you'd like to within that, if there are questions or you can pass if you need to. And of course, we, member Olson has recused himself, so we'll just get past that order. So if you have questions, so, member Bassett, it turns to you.
Thank you. So I feel like I have the answer to the question on my page, so I'm going to jump to just a general question, especially where we have this fresh in our minds. So to the board, you just, you heard the work group's report, and I'm curious, what is an area that you agree with, or is there something that you feel like the work group misunderstood in your application? I'd just like to give you a chance to speak to those things that have been shared.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. Thank you. That was the first that I had seen, a lot of that feedback. And maybe just kind of going back to our previous application as well and combining the two. The feedback that we heard loud and clear last time was board capacity and experience in running a was board capacity and experience in running a school. So we tried to address that head-on. We agreed with that feedback, and, and we tried to improve. So what we did is, we went out and we found, we recruited two of the busiest people with the most experience that we could find to serve on our board, with not only an educational background, but a, a background in the law. On top of that, we started communicating with American Preparatory Schools for some of the day-to-day management. So that was done in order to address the feedback that we previously received. On top of that, two of the members previously from our board that had a relationship with American Preparatory Schools are no longer on our board. So we feel like we have addressed that on both sides. So some of the, I guess, some of those same concerns that were brought up in the, in the work group meeting, I feel like we've worked very hard to address. The second feedback that we heard from the meeting last time was more feedback from the public on what the public wants, as far as like a feasibility study, a market study. So we addressed both of those concerns that you presented to us last time.
Sorry. I also feel like my question has been addressed. But the question I'm supposed to ask is how you came together as a board for this application? What I think most of us are really interested in hearing is what the role of the CMO has been as you have come together. How, how is, what was the genesis of your group like? And what was the involvement of APA, American Preparatory Academy, with relationship to American Principals Academy?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'll start, and then if anybody else wanted to jump in, I'll just start with my, my personal experience. So I, I started reaching out to different schools in the state of Utah to try to bring a class, I'm committed to the classical model, classical education. I, I would like to see that option available in Iron County. Right now, it's not. So I started reaching out, I think it was six or seven years ago, to try to, to try to bring, gauge interest and bring a school to Cedar City. I think two years ago, maybe three, COVID has thrown my timelines off on everything. I, I reached out to American Preparatory Schools to see what options might be available there. So I know as far as me personally, I, I know Kami very well. I've known Matt for a while. He's been a, a good friend. I reached out to Blaine, because I'm familiar with his experience as an attorney with the Iron County School District. And then Kelly, I think we first met because she signed a form requesting a school come to, come to Cedar City. And then I've known Stephanie Hill since she got elected to the Iron County School District Board. So that's, that's kind of my past and how I, I got to know the board members. Does anybody else want to add to that?
I'm pretty similar, but it's been, yeah, three or four years for me that my kids have attended a classical school before with the classical model. So I'm very passionate about bringing that back, an, an option for a classical model back to Cedar City. Obviously, selfishly for my own children, but for everybody else. And so when I knew Casey was, was reaching out to schools and got involved with him, I jumped on board. And, and that, I guess that's pretty much how I got involved here and became a member of this board.
Yeah, I can share my experience. I, while I do know Casey from before, I actually came through my, my wife, who knew the wife of Scott, one of our previous members. And when this board was forming, trying to bring the classical model, my wife told me, she's like, they need, this is what we need. My wife has an advanced degree in education. Homeschools are children, I'm very fortunate in that. But she's like, this is what we need in Iron County. So she basically told me I needed to be on the board, because they needed a treasurer. I have, I have an MBA. I work in business. I can do that. So a lot of the education stuff over my head, but I'm here basically as kind of the treasurer, business-minded person. And, yeah.
I, knowing Blaine's wife as well, I, I think it might be fair to say that all three of the males on this board are here, because we were probably told to do so by our wives. So.
It works.
Well done. There we go. Actually, Blaine was recruited because he's my father-in-law. So this is how, we knew we needed the capacity of an attorney per guidance from you all. And I have known from my mother-in-law and father-in-law and their background in homeschool, and my father-in-law's background with the Iron County School Board. So I just asked him at a family gathering if that's something he would do. And he graciously said yes, because he loves the spotlight on him. But I have, I got to know, well, Karen Thalen, our former chair, reached out and asked if there were any homeschool parents that would like to be on the board. And I said yes, because I saw the way that public schools were going throughout the country. And that's something my husband and I had been talking about, having kids. Our oldest is eight, so we've had a couple of years to figure out life. And COVID hit, and we're like, we don't know what's going on. And so we homeschooled. And so being on the board and seeing this classical model, I'm like, yes. My husband has toured some classical schools, and he said, yes, this is what I want for my kids. And I know of parents in Cedar who would like this. So I got pushed onto it from my husband. So it's not just wives, it's also husbands. But I have been amazed at working with our board and seeing how much we all want this model, and how much we want the classical model. Now, whether it's APS that brings it down, that's why we put it in, because that is who has helped us. But do we have to have American Preparatory Schools? No. But it is who we have seen who is successful in running a classical school. They have a lot of campuses. And to address what's on their website, they have told us that they're looking into opening a private school in Cedar City. So that has nothing to do with American Preparatory Academy on their website. It is for their private school that might be opening, is what we as a board have been told, because we also had that question. So.
Thank you. All right. Continue your response. Yeah.
I'm just here for my looks, as you can tell. I don't really, I don't have a relationship with American Preparatory. I, but we, we raised eight kids in Iron County, and we were constantly searching for alternatives, choices. Not, some went, some probably would have opted to go to regular school. Others would have done a little better in a different setting. And so my, my goal is choice. My goal is, you know, we have, I have probably 50 kids in the private school that we educate on a daily basis. Not one of those programs is the same from kid to kid to kid, because they're different. They're different commodities. They're different people, different experiences. And so I'm an advocate for opportunities and choice. And that's one of the things that attracted me to the board. Plus Kelly has more power over me than you might imagine. I just wanted to, I just, so I would say this with respect to the CMO. Frankly, and I don't know with respect to this one in particular. I do have some experience now that I've met some of the people. You'd be crazy not to seek the assistance of a good CMO to help you develop something. Why in the world would you reinvent the wheel? Why wouldn't you reach out to the best opportunities or experiences that you're aware of to have them help guide, if you can? You know, in the attorney world, we, we plagiarize like crazy. I hate to say it that way, but, you know, it makes, it. And then with, so I'm struggling a little bit to understand what the overall concern is. I think I've heard something in the presentation that you gave about whether it's a carbon copy, or is it really its own school? And as far as I can tell, from being on the board, it's its own school. It's its own entity. It will operate as its own entity. If it uses that particular CMO, nothing would ever stop it from public-private or at some point turning and going with another CMO, if that CMO turned out to be better, or had something more that we were, the board was interested in. And then let me just speak really quickly, if I can, to the statutory obligations. There are certain statutory obligations you cannot delegate. And one of them is the oversight by this board, because the buck stops here. You can certainly delegate teachers and teaching and intellectual property. You can seek intellectual property from other sources. But at the end of the day, this group is responsible. That statutory authority cannot be delegated. And so I'm not worried about the delegation of statutory authority. In fact, I think it's a wise business practice in most situations. I said that wrong. I am worried about the delegation of statutory responsibility, and we are not doing that. And then before, I, I'm sorry, I'm the attorney, and I just never shut up. Once I get going. What is the status of the corrective action? Does anybody know? It's lifted. So that's, yeah. And I would agree with you. That doesn't have anything to do with this group. But apparently, it's been lifted. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to turn now to member Spiker.
Thank you. I feel through your responses, many of our questions have been answered or definitely have helped illuminate a little bit more. I do want to comment that last week I had an opportunity to visit APA, and it was a wonderful visit. And, and interestingly enough, and I would agree that a Montessori school and what you're proposing are very, are very different. However, we had a wonderful conversation about, about student-centered education, about what we are hoping for in terms of providing children an opportunity to build resiliency, respect for themselves, other and their space, self-accountability, understanding their place in a community in a global world. That's all Montessori, and that's all definitely part of, I think, what I'm hearing within your model. And so I guess, and you know, we've, we've spoken before, and I just, I think, my hope is, is that, yes, we are striving for innovation. And while we do that, we also realize, I think, that we have more in common than we realize. And as we continue to, and there's no question, I know that Iron County, through the, the, all of the documents we've received, that the community is craving something like this. There is definitely support and a need. And, and also that we, we continue to think deeply about those partnerships that we build between our district schools, our charter schools, and who we are as just wanting to educate our children, right? So I don't, I guess, I don't really have, I don't necessarily have a question per se, but maybe with that in mind, as you're striving to find those partnerships. And, and I think, Ms. Hill, maybe you could speak a little bit about how you might navigate just your relationship with this, with the Board of Ed within the county, and then being involved in a charter. Just, I think there's great potential and opportunity there, right? To build those relationships. But could you speak to a little bit of how you might navigate that gray area a little bit?
Thank you so much for that question. You've already mentioned it. We want the best for our kids, whatever it takes. And that's what this board represents. And the part of the community that is hungry for this model, that's what they need and want. I am equally as concerned for our public schools. I, in fact, I'm, I'm still in the hole with having spent money. I, I got into a bit of an argument with the business administrator, because I'm now, I, I'm a secondary teacher. I happen to know a lot about primary literacy, because my kid, I had to pay a fortune for Lynda Mudd-Bell, because we did not have what the state of, the great state of Utah has now mandated with letters training. Well, guess what I'm going to be doing on Monday? I don't have a classroom, but there's a, there's a heck of a fourth grade teacher at North, and I volunteered my father to go and volunteer two hours every day. And I'm going to embed, embed myself in that classroom and continue that study, because I don't have a classroom. And I, and I never did have an elementary classroom. But my great concern is when we don't, when we cannot bridge for kids like my own son, who went into a secondary level without those, without those basic, without those basic skills. And I am committed, as is our superintendent and the board, to make sure that that happens. And so how, when you ask, how will I bridge with whatever it takes? With being open-minded to a community? So I'm 170 years deep in Cedar City. I'm the daughter of a daughter of a rancher. Cedar City has changed tremendously. Being the daughter of a daughter of a rancher, I grew up in an incredibly diverse Las Vegas, Nevada. And we are going to accommodate those changes. We do live in a global community. It doesn't matter where you come from, who you are, or who you affiliate with. Everyone deserves proficiency skills. And to know that they are part of a community, and that we are all globally invested to their, with, with their success. So when you ask, how will we bridge that? I'm not sure. Those are decisions that are made moment to moment with a commitment to dignity and to success. And we have that on this board, and we have it in Cedar City. Thank you.
Before I ask my question, I do just want to address that. I actually think having Ms. Hill and Iron County School District representation on that board is an asset, not a conflict. I think anytime that we can have higher ed partners, community partners, district partners, and cross-collaborate, we just strengthen the educational community. So thank you for being willing to tackle one more thing. Member Spiker alluded to all of the documentation we had showing the community support. I would just love to get on the record some of that data that came back from that QR code and, and some of the community support. And then I'm going to take a cheat and say that was member Olson's question, and then mine will be. You said that, a lot of people said, we want classical, and then that data speaking to we want classical. But what I haven't heard is, why classical? So I want it. I want this classical model. But what is it about a classical model that has you excited and willing to give up half of your life to bring to Cedar City?
May I add to that, too? Because I would have asked later, and I think it dovetails nicely, is, you know, if someone said to me, they wanted a classical model, what is that? Someone gave me an elevator speech, too. What does it mean to have a classical model? And then why do you want it? Yeah.
Well, I, I'll, I'll speak to what I want as, as an individual. I, I think importance of maintaining the, the classics and things like such as literature, language, I think those are important. The moral foundation of honesty, civic involvement, those types of things are things that I, I look for. I, I'm biased towards, these are kind of cultural issues, but like uniforms, I, I think that's something that is important. And, and I've tried to ask our local school district to, to go that route, and that's not going anywhere. So more time in the schools, more focus on science, math, engineering, those types of subjects are things that, as a parent, I'm very passionate about. I know in the market study, we had, I think there was 390 or 400 individuals who said, we need another school in Iron County. 350 of those specifically said a classical school. And that was, that was done in three weeks. Like this, this has all been very short and very quick. I, I've just been so excited about how easy it has been to get people to support our school. Our school district unanimously voted to, to send a statement of support. Our state legislators, our county commissioners, mayors, city council members, they're, they're all documented as, as being in support. I reached out to Success Academy, a charter high school, and he submitted, and I just emailed that to you yesterday. I apologize for the short notice. He emailed it to me that morning. Even the other K through eight charter school in Iron County, Gateway Academy, Montessori, I, I looked in that school. And, and my wife and I just felt like the approach that they took wasn't a good fit for us. But I play basketball with, with the new executive director over there, and, and I'm sure he'll be far less competitive than he is with, with basketball. So we're, we're great friends. So sometimes it gets kind of weird, to be honest with you. So that's what I look for. And I think the community has expressed very clearly that, that they, that that's what they're looking for as, as well. Would anybody else like to talk about that?
For the classical model that you asked about. So it's learning the rhetoric. So it's learning the rhetoric. And before you can critically think and to think as an adult and all of these higher levels of thinking, you need to know the facts. You need to know, you have to have your basis of logic and everything. And that is what the classical model does. It teaches you the logic behind things, why things happen, what it is, and teaches you about the philosophers and about the classic literature, Shakespeare, that everything is based off of. So you're able to take what you know and how to learn it and learn and think in a higher way.
Yeah, I think these, these two described it well. For me myself, my, like I said, my children were in a classical, private school in Cedar that existed for a very short time. They came home from school every day, and they would just tell me all the, you know, everything. They were learning Latin. That's one thing that I, I love about our model. And, and the, and the cursive writing. My kids would, they took such pride in their handwriting, you know, studying the classic literature, the philosophers, these things that just create, you know, teach children to, I mean, it just does, for some reason, causes children to think deep and critically. And my kids, when they came home from school and were excited and, and would tell me everything they learned. And it would take not five seconds, but, you know, 20 minutes. And, and so I, I just fell in love with the model at that point and knew this was, my children responded very well. And I think most of us who have used the classical model would, can say the same thing, but that's been my experience.
Any other follow-up? And I'll turn to member Carrie if he would like, member Carrie, if you would like.
Thank you, Chair. I just have one question. When you were here last time, I, I came in, I sat down, and I saw the paperwork, and I said, oh, American Preparatory Academy is presenting today. Because I looked just real quick at the logo, the coloring, and the messaging. And for a moment, there was some confusion on my part. And what actions, if any, are you taking to make sure that? Because it looks like you're sharing the curriculum, you're, you're sharing the, the management team. What efforts, if any, are you taking to make sure that that confusion isn't taking place with your clients, your customers, your students, your?
I think that's a good question, and that's why I think optionality is, is so important. And as a board, we need to have the, the, the ability to determine what's best for our, for our children, for our families, and for our community. And, and I think that that's why we've kind of built in options into our application, is so that we can go with what's best. And I, I, I think Blaine Hoffling was correct. I, I think when you go and you identify different educational opportunities in the state of Utah, and you pick, hey, here's three that are great, you, you kind of run with that a little bit, right? And that, that's what you're biased to. And that's kind of what we're committed to is, is the model. We're not committed to the name, we're not committed to the coloring, or the marketing, or that sort of stuff. As, as a board, we're going to do what we feel like is best for the children, the families, the community in Cedar City, in Iron County. Although Matt doesn't live in Iron County, he's the only one. He lives just over the border in beautiful New Harmony. And I know there's a lot of families down in New Harmony, so I don't mean to exclude people that are just over the border. But we, we're committed to the model.
Whenever I speak to, sorry, whenever I speak to people that, to tell them about American Principles Academy coming, they honestly have never been farther north than Beaver, Utah. So they don't know American Preparatory Academy. They don't know that name. If you, if you, if you tell them, American Preparatory Academy is coming, they're like, okay? They don't know that. So they know us by American Principles Academy. They know us as Cedar City families, Cedar City parents, who are trying to get this model. And they, at the beginning, they have questions. What is a classical model school? And so I've had to sit down and tell my friends, this is what we're trying to do, and this is what we're trying to bring. They're like, that's what I want. So that's how they know us. They don't know American Preparatory Academies. You, you as a board know who they are because you're their authorizers. People in Cedar City don't.
Well, there's a lot of reasons why we know, but.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I have, I have actually never heard this brought up outside of this room. You know, it's, it's just not, well, I get, you know, maybe the hallway. But I, I've never heard this brought up in Iron County. So it's something that we, we need to, to be able to address, for sure.
All right, let's see. Board members, do you have additional questions? Anyone? Vice Chair Phillips, please.
In our presentation from Ms. Stephenson, she, there was a highlighted concern related to having a break-even budget that literally had no, you know, no carryover funds whatsoever. And while it's true that the state allocates money to public education so that it can actually be spent on that education, particularly in those years where you are establishing good financial health for your institution, we have a metric we look at for carryover funds that allows you, over the course of, you know, three, five years, over the course of even one year, to have something to, to have enough that you could meet your payroll obligations, at least if, if there was a problem for a month or so. I'm wondering, I know you've got some finance people on the board. You've got others who have been part of schools and organizations who have budgeted. Could you address that concern and how you might address it going forward if we were to consider granting authorization today?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. The, when we did that on the budget, the break-even, in my mind, that was just zero. So if we need to adjust that number up, it would be about 235 to 240 students would, that number would, the, the break-even number of students would go up from 194, I think it was 197, up to about 230, 240, to meet that 5%. What, what is it called again? I'm sorry, the, that, that buffer. And so, you know, we can change that number, and we're, I'm looking forward to, you know, working on that budget. We did, we did use the state's template. We didn't want to change things or put a lot of things in there, so we used the, the budget, the template that was provided for us. I don't know if that answers your question. That's kind of where that number came from. I can add, I can make another column with a 5% on there, and that's what those numbers would look like.
Perfect, thank you.
Additional questions? Board members? Anyone who have clarifications? Member Cisneros, please.
Maybe this is a question for staff. So do we have two votes today? So one is on the application and one is on the waiver? Or are those seen as a single application?
In our last meeting, my understanding is we approved a waiver to move forward. Did we? Is that, otherwise they wouldn't be here today. It's my understanding, right? That we approved the opportunity for them to approach this as a waiver. So today, so we've shortcut, we have a shortcut to the normal process. We waived the process, my understanding, in our last meeting. And so today, we would approve the application potentially from our perspective, and then they would then go to the next step, which I think would be to the State Board of Education. Is that right? Vice Chair Phillips, please.
We may, I, I know we, we may need to look back at our minutes. I know we approved, we, we agreed to hear them on an expedited basis for their full application. I don't know that we have officially approved by a vote to send a favorable recommendation to the USBE for the waiver.
No, no, I don't think that we have.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah. True? That's, all right, thank you. We'll do, we'll make sure we have that. So it does sound like, do we, we're just approving the waiver? Or as member Cisneros is asking, we need to approve also the? So, so my question is, what was our vote last month was to?
I, I could look at the specific language, but as far as my memory serves, your vote was to have them come today and present what they wanted to do. And so I, I do think that member Cisneros is correct, that you're essentially looking at two votes here if you're approving the recommendation of a waiver to go to USBE, as well as if you are approving to authorize the charter school. And from the, the graphic that had the timeline, you may also want to consider that if the waiver is not approved by USBE, does that then move this applicant into our typical pool? Maybe they wouldn't need to come present in January, but would they be part of that cohort of any approved schools in January? Or would that invalidate their approval? Are they conditioned on each other or not?
So that could be part of the motion then instead. All right. So in my mind, we'd approved a waiver, and that's why they were here today. So, but even if we approve a waiver three or four times even, it doesn't matter as long as it gets done, right? So, yeah, go ahead, member Smith.
Respectfully, it does matter because what we, we waived was our own process, our own usual process. What we don't have the authority to waive is anything that is the state charter's, or the state board's authority, right? So here, we're talking about something different from our own process. We're talking about approving their application and then making a recommendation to the state school board as to whether we believe that they should be granted the waiver there that they are seeking. And if we were to suggest that they should not do that, then we would have probably invalidated our own approval.
Let's, let's go that direction. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, just real quick. I, I sent a letter to the board from, from a developer of a, of a property in Cedar City, and it's really, it, the location is, is perfect. And the timing, I spoke to our county assessor six months ago or so, and he said there was one property that met like the square footage requirement. The layout did not work at all, but it met the square footage requirement. There was one property. So the developer of the property, it's in the process of being built, and the location is perfect. So it just couldn't have worked out any better if, if you decide to approve the application. It's right off of 200 North, which is the, the main street in Cedar City. It's close to I-15 for access so that people from New Harmony or, or Enoch can get to the school, and it's on top of a hill. So it's, that's the letter that I sent you. I just want to explain that and, and why the timing kind of plays into that a little bit.
Thank you, thank you. We knew you, I, I think property was kind of in our minds from last time too, that we, we knew that that was a concern that you had, and that's why we would consider moving it forward quickly. So, all right, so based on that discussion, I, I'd be, if, unless you have additional discussions you'd like to have, I'm ready for a motion, and that motion would be around the potential of approving this application or not. So if someone is ready, member Smith.
I think I'm ready.
All right.
I would like to move that we approve the application of American Principles Academy. And we'll deal with the rest of it in another motion.
Right. So I, a motion to approve the application for American Principles Academy. Is there a second to that motion?
I second that motion.
And a second then from Vice Chair Phillips. So a, a motion from member Smith, second from Vice Chair Phillips. Additional discussion on that motion. Member Cisneros.
About two AAGs ago, there was a ruling that a private entity that organized for the sole purpose of becoming a public entity was held to the same effect as if they were public. So I think under that historical ruling, the CMO is material to the application. No different than Connections Academy, or Utah Virtual Academy, or any of those other ones. Having said that, I don't, I don't care that they do it, and we certainly have plenty of schools who do. I think the question was material. So I will support the motion to approve them with an understanding that that is very clearly articulated in the charter. I do not think the school would exist. I don't want to pretend like they would if the CMO went away. It would materially change the school. No different than Connections or Utah Virtual Academy would be materially changed if their CMO changed. And I know Utah Virtual did change a C, or a business manager, not necessarily a CMO, but they also have had repercussions as a result of, of going out to the market for a CMO after the fact. So I just want to make sure that in the charter agreement, that the material aspects of the CMO are clearly articulated, as well as the board's obligations as a board having an agreement with this board. That's too many boards, but I think the motion will, the minutes will reflect my intent.
Yeah, and I saw Ms. Stephenson taking notes as well. Thank you for that history and clarifications. You have some history that some of us don't have. Vice Chair Phillips, yeah.
Just to add to that, that the state legislature passed statute, I, I'm all messed up with my years because of COVID-2, but I want to say maybe four years ago, no more than five, I think, in which they gave power to authorizers and to have access to CMOs and similar private groups that served public schools in these material ways so that we could, we could actually ensure that there was adherence to law and, and rule. So there is also that that bolsters, or makes me more comfortable with the arrangement and our ability working with a governing board of a school to ensure compliance in a variety of ways.
Thank you. All right, additional discussion. All right, sing nun. Oh, yeah.
Sorry, and I know I'm standing between lunch, and so I really apologize for that. But I, I had this thought yesterday, not related to this topic at all, but then it came up in this. And that is, this idea of whether or not the school, and I'm going to go back to the original APA, and whether or not their issues with USBE are material to American Principles Academy. And the thought is, a lot of us in charter world got involved in charter schools believing that we were going to be able to do something different and innovative and separate from the status quo. And over the last 20-some-odd years, stop signs keep getting erected that, that prevent, or change, or materially alter the way a school was originally organized 20 years ago, 18 years ago, 15 years ago. Meaning that the innovation either came in conflict with a new stop sign or made the innovation an add-on to compliance, making it one more thing. And just like we all know when we're busy, the add-ons are what get dropped off. And so innovation, or why we got into the sandbox in the first place, become very, very prohibitive and sometimes come in conflict. But it's an artificial stop sign put up after the fact. So then you say, okay, I've been operating this way, I've been doing it, we're having success, and all of a sudden somebody sticks up a stop sign, and now I get thrown with phrases like, innovation is never an excuse for non-compliance. Well, I was being innovative before you put me into non-compliance, right? And so it, it becomes a lose-lose. And so I feel like maybe some of our concerns are artificial stop signs. And I, I don't ever want to be part of the people holding up as a crossing guard, right? I, I want to try to make the flow. So I, I don't know how we rectify that because I'm not saying we break laws, but are the laws just there because somebody put up a stop sign?
Thank you for that. That could be an editorial in the newspaper then. You can start from there. But, but we, and we are in compliance with laws, and sometimes because laws change. You just have to go do a special ed law conference, which happened frequently, to know how often they are updated and changed, and we're trying to just scramble to keep up with them. But it, they, that happens, and we have to be in compliance with those. And so sometimes even what we thought was innovative, loss-change. You know, we try to, and everyone trying to do the best they can for kids is the bottom line. So thank you though, that was, I, well said. All right, additional comments prior to moving forward this motion? Right, the motion on the table is that we approve the application of American Principles Academy. Do we need a roll call for this? I think we're okay if we just, if you call out. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstaining?
No, no, sorry, I was wiping my eye.
No, I'm saying that.
Oh, sorry. I am not a mess today, but I am a little.
So it passes unanimously, but we do have one abstention that we've clarified from the first. All right. Now, we need a second potential motion, which would be this board approving the request for a waiver. Is my understanding? No, all right, member Smith, help.
I would like to move.
Thank you.
That this board provide a favorable recommendation to the State Board of Education that they, we recommend that they.
that they, we recommend that they approve the waiver request that American Principals Academy will bring to them.
All right. So the motion that is, that, and let me have a second first, and then I'll restate, second to that motion.
I'll second that.
And a second for Member Bassett. All right, so the motion for Member Smith, and you help correct me if I'm not saying correctly, but that motion is that we provide a favorable recommendation to the State Board of Education for American Principals Academy to waive the normal process.
To have their waiver request approved.
Have their waiver request approved. Very easy. Thank you. All right, that's the motion before us. Discussion to that motion.
Just a question, should we say that if it's not approved, January deal here? Or should that be a third?
Yes, thank you.
Or should that be a third motion by itself?
Let's do a second then a third. Can we do that?
Okay, yes.
I think that's a great, thank you for reminding us. So let's just keep that motion clean relative to this motion is for a favorable recommendation to the State Board of Education. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention? We just want to make sure we note that. All right, now, could we have a third motion that should that waiver not be approved?
I would like to move that should the State Board of Education deny American Principals Academy's waiver request, that we, their application retain its approved status and that they be moved into the regular applicant track.
All right. Just knowing that we've approved earlier than January in that case, which normally we would make approvals in January, but instead that we've done it in September, right? All right. So the motion is that if that waiver request is denied, that this application then has been approved and will go into the cycle of applications that we would approve in January 2024, that approval is just early, right? Okay, second to that motion.
I will second that motion.
Member Bassett, second to that motion. Any discussion around that third motion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention? All right. Thank you. So now you've got your work cut out for you, right?
Starts.
Go and talk to the state board and see if they can, and it's all has to do with timing, obviously you know that, with money and how finances work, and so that they don't disadvantage you, but also money is available, so they'll have a good discussion around that as well.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I have a soccer game at four with four kids, so I will drive safe, I promise.
Yeah, I've had that safe drive. All right. All right. Board members, we are then adjourned for lunch, and we return at 1:30?
1:30.
1:30.
It's going to have to wait.
No, thank you.
I don't even, I try real hard to not even check my emails.
I said to.
Recording stopped.
Jerry, are you there? Were you good to go? Can you please let me know via Teams?
Recording in progress.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, thank you all who makes it possible for us to have individuals join us in this meeting, and we want them to be able to do that and to be with us. I'll start with just with one piece. I indicated this morning that we'd have an individual at 1:30 who wanted to make public comment. That individual still would like to, but it's had something prevent her from being here right now, so we won't have a comment at this 1:30 time, but that individual was coming to endorse our new strategic plan and encourage us to adopt it. So that's what would have happened then. Now, I'm going to go back. As careful as we were, we made three motions to approve a school as we approved the process because it's out of our normal process, so we had to figure out, we're figuring out how to do that, and we have some recommendation that we need to make one more motion to make this all work. So I'm going to ask AAG Olson to talk to us about this need, which makes sense to me. Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. I just think it'd be good to point out as well that Michelle Smith is no longer, had to be excused. Is not present at the moment, but a question came up while we were adjourned for those few minutes about who should be bringing the request for a waiver from the board, the state board. As you know, the process for approving applications, that process gets approved by the state board. It's presented by the charter school board and then approved by the state board. And what is being asked is to deviate from that process. And so the question is, should that be the state charter school board that should be requesting that deviation or the school? And it may be that it has, it should be the board. And so the thought was, if that's the case, and we'll look at that closer, but if that's the case, then we would approve a motion here that would allow the board through its interim executive directors to make that, to go through that process, whatever the board process is, to waive that. And as I understand it, this is the first time that that would be asked, and so there isn't a specific process that you would go through to seek that waiver, but you would approach the state board for that, and I'll find out what I can as well as to what that process might be.
Yeah, so we're thinking we should make an additional motion. So what AAG Olson is saying to us, of course, is that the waiver request is not from the school, the waiver request from the school was to us to waive, but what this waiver is our request to waive the process that we've established with USBE. So we've asked, we will be asking the State Board of Education to waive the process that we established with them, the normal timing. We'd be asking them to waive that process to allow us to approve a school. So instead of the school asking for the waiver, because it's an applicant, they're not really a school yet, they're an applicant, right? We've approved that application, but in order for them to become a school, they have to have this process waived in order for the state board to approve them outside of the normal timeframe. Does that make sense to everyone? And so let's make a motion to that end, and I asked AAG Olson if he'd have, do you have some language that we could use, you think that?
Well, I don't have anything in writing, but you actually were more eloquent than I was. But I think the motion could be just that, that the board would be authorized to take those steps that are necessary to waive your process so this school can move forward with the state board.
All right, so we are the ones requesting that waiver. So based on that language, should someone like to say so moved, or if you're inclined? If not, we know that you will have to wait, and they would go through our regular process starting in January.
So moved.
All right. Motion to approve that we go to the state board to make that request, a second to that. Motion.
I'll second that motion.
And a second by Member Bassett. We still will continue, I'm sure I'll speak for him, but Member Olson will abstain from this because it's part of this series of motions we made for this school. And so, but we still have a quorum, though Member Smith had to excuse herself this afternoon. We still have a quorum as we each, there are five of us that can still vote. So all those in, oh, maybe there's some discussion. Any discussion about that? All right, those in favor of that motion for that waiver, we requesting, we requesting that waiver of the State Board of Education, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously with one abstention and knowing one absentee. So, great, okay, so we'll know that as that's scheduled, I know Ms. Stephenson will probably schedule that, knowing that Vice Chair Phillips and I will make ourselves available to be with you at that time if, you know, to request that waiver of our process and explain why. Okay, all right. Now, something we've really looked forward to, I got those pieces done, is looking at the strategic plan, which each of you have had a copy of and I hope have had a chance to look at. I know you have, you've had some feedback to that, and I'm going to turn the time to Vice Chair Phillips, who has really been the lead on this strategic plan and really helped us to have this plan today for you to look at.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chair Bowles. I wanted to give a brief overview of the reason that this strategic plan that's been proposed today is different, both in content and in format from last year's plan. As you know, one of the things that we've been talking about since May as a board and in public meeting, as well as, you know, in speaking with small legislative groups or the associations, or, you know, occasionally each other when we have obligations in a committee, is differentiating ourselves for the sake of redundancy and best practice as well from the State Board of Education. And one of the things that a legislative audit of some years ago now, it's probably been about two, two and a half years ago, that came out about reports and requirements noted, is that while there are hundreds of reports that all public schools have to do, in fact, they stopped counting after a while, that was the joke for a while about that legislative audit of reports and requirements, that charters have double what the districts have to do, and they already have too many, by far too many. And part of that, unfortunately, is that our charters have sometimes lived under the guidance and monitoring of a big board of education and then a tiny board of education. And our staff, already recognizing that, has done some really amazing things administratively. As for instance, noting that our main interest in looking at schools and addressing complaints in that regard of monitoring deals with board governance, where only our state charter school board or other authorizers have a monitoring function over these charter school boards with whom we have a bilateral agreement in opposition or, you know, to district boards that are elected and are answerable to their electorate. And so with this bilateral agreement we have with these governing boards, we have a vested interest in their good governance and in their actions and, to a large extent, in the way that they conduct themselves. So we don't relinquish that ever, and our staff has not when complaints come in. They also understand, we also understand that we have a monitoring function, generally speaking, for operations and the health of the school and financial health of the school. And most importantly, because of course, money still is distributed by the State Board of Education to those LEAs, and so the state board has actually the biggest monitoring function there in terms of restricted funds and other things, but we generally care about the health of our, financial health of our schools. And then finally, the real kicker is the performance measures that we've agreed upon with our schools in their charter agreements. That is actually, we have a very vested interest in that, as do they with us. With that in mind, we've contemplated the legal and sort of administrative environment in which charter schools live in Utah. We've looked at a couple of different things. We've looked at how the legislature has favored and prioritized choice in our state. We've also looked at the fact that for the last couple of years, the State Board of Education has been trying to, has been running a task force, which gave recommendations that haven't, I don't think, been adopted yet, but nevertheless, the task force was looking at different ways to measure school accountability, because even the board of education, who might be characterized as less progressive than we are, was looking at ways to nuance the outward-facing data gateway, data page for parents by not only listing academic rise scores and those sorts of data points, but also all kinds of things, school culture, key elements, things that districts could tout about what they consider to be educational outcomes that were valid for parents to make choices for their children, because we are an open enrollment state. In addition, the legislature has made it very clear to leadership through their discussions with us in administrative rules and other things, that they're looking for not only a competitive authorizing environment, but an authorizing environment in which choice and innovation and flexibility are prioritized. As you think about this strategic plan, board members, I would ask you to consider as well that all of the minimum academic standards and other standards that the State Board of Education requires of our schools, of our authorized schools, remain. Those are there constantly until the board changes them, but they are there for our schools to adhere to and to be monitored accordingly. The State Board of Education can always put our schools on turnaround, give them a cap, and take any other corrective measure that they deem appropriate. So where does that leave kind of the, our most influential actions to reside? What categories? As we thought about that, we considered how important it is to recognize the reasons for which we chartered or authorized charter schools, that is, individual schools even. A school may have come to us and said, "We want to serve students at risk of failure and at risk of not graduating." They didn't come to us and say, "We intend to authorize, ask you to authorize a school that is, has some of the highest rise scores in the test and is a college preparatory school." Some did, right? And many others have come with much different purposes, and yet we have at times, I would say, turned around and applied not only the minimum standards required by the State Board of Education, but something that we have created in addition to that, when we authorized some of these schools on a very, very different basis in terms of educational outcomes, which, of which academic achievement is one, but not the only one. It's one that most parents care something about, but often don't prioritize and prioritize other things in favor of that, and therefore attend a charter school who does the same. We wanted to recognize something that Members Sisneros brought up earlier, which is that in a, in a public education sector where compliance is often prioritized by a state education agency, and that's not just ours, but for good reason, many, that what happens to innovation is often that even when a school authorized for a very innovative purpose tries to innovate, it runs headlong into systems that actually don't allow that, even when there's a waiver for it, because of reporting requirements and the clunkiness of, and systematization of those particular systems. And unfortunately, I think sometimes what we've done, not always, sometimes we've, I think, been very liberating and supportive of our authorized schools, but sometimes what we've done is add to that, add to that with stop signs of our own. What this plan intends to do is to recognize, first of all, reflect in it the direction that has already been reflected in the description that we posted for the type of executive director that we want to run our board. Our board had an opportunity, members had an opportunity to comment on that, make suggestions, and that description reflects our will that an executive director, leading our very capable staff, look outward toward the legislature for obtaining and achieving a more flexible environment for charters, a more supportive environment, looks outward to our associations to make partnerships in supporting charter schools, looks outward to our charter schools themselves, and recognizes that in some ways the devil's in the details when you're talking about unique schools instead of a system of schools. And so that's the first thing I wanted to say. And so that's, that's the first thing I wanted to say about kind of how we tried, within this strategic plan of, tried to capture the board's will, as has been expressed in some meetings and in that director's job description and in other conversations that have been going on now, I'd say, since really the beginning of 2023. In addition, we recognized in terms of format, that our strategic plan of last year, which was our first one that we'd written, was very management-oriented. I think that's a reflection of, of a first go, where you're trying to do too much, instead of, this is a case where I think less is more, the one that we presented here, and it also is a reflection of, I think, some of the priorities of a year ago that had been expressed, which were more management-oriented, frankly. And we've, I think, we fortunately moved away from that. The, has now constituted, as a proposal, we have our mission and vision, our chartering and authorizing in Utah introduction, our sort of, an explanation of what the Utah State Charter School Board is. It's basically one paragraph, which is, I think, helpful when you're looking at a strategic plan, when the public is looking at a strategic plan. Our priorities now and our strategic governance goals constitute one page, currently page nine, which I think is appropriate when you're looking at governing, governing goals, and then we have links to authorize our specific code and so on. Now, one of the things that has been suggested, because all board members had an opportunity to suggest, and I'd like to take these suggestions immediately, although the first one I want to talk about a little bit. The chartering and authorizing in Utah is sort of a multi-page context for where we are now, and acknowledges that it's a living document, the strategic plan is a living document, and that that will continually need to be updated, as will the national statistics on sort of where we rank. It's been suggested that maybe that portion could live somewhere else. I, I think there's some real value in that. I also think that, I have to say, that every strategic plan I've ever read, from a business, a private business, a school, or district, or any other organization, does explain its founding and its history. So I'm not sure that, it's definitely perhaps the driest part, but at the same time, if I'm somebody from Nevada, or I'm somebody from southern Utah, thinking about, you know, what is, what is going on in Utah with chartering? I might want to know, you know, there are many, many in our own charter world that don't understand that the state charter school board was not the original authorizers of charter schools in Utah there, and how we've changed over time in terms of not just becoming a board that was legislatively created, that could recommend authorization, but even that can now authorize without the confirmation of the USBE. There's been a lot of, and I'm not even sure that's in there, I think it might be. But regardless, it's about, it's, it's, you know, a handful of pages, I guess it's maybe like one, two, three of background, if that's correct. Actually, it's only two pages, maybe three. And then, so that's been a suggestion that I think we could adopt if we wanted to. My knee-jerk reaction was, yeah, let's get it out of there, it would be great to have an even shorter plan, but then I'm thinking, maybe not, maybe we should keep it in so that those who come after have that nuance, whether it be board members or individuals seeking to authorize. The data has been updated, related to a national overview of where Utah ranks in its overall score, of choice programs, of charter schools and of innovation, and also, we are still in the top 10% of states, with Florida leading the way, there, Arizona also, very innovative in parent choice, and that has a lot to do, I think, with getting charter schools out, much as we've approved today a charter school in an area that doesn't have a lot of choice. And so we are in the top 10 there, but we've dropped, in other, in other ways, down from, you know, sort of a top 20, down into sort of the 20 to 30 range in other aspects, including in the flexibility of our charter law and other things, to, to some of the points that have been made. And we want to get back up there. So, so as you look at, and I did, I should say, I did accept a bunch of recommendations. Member Cisneros noted in the Utah State Charter School Board paragraph of description, that the word "board" was mentioned when it should be the state charter school board. And so I've accepted that, already that recommendation, because it makes all kinds of sense to clarify that. In addition, I also, in the "to be fully achieved in more than five years," made the verbs imperatives, instead of the, I guess, the participles that they, well, they were gerunds, I guess. We fixed those, so we have increase, be, and promote, instead of increasing, being, and promoting. And those have been accepted. One of the things that was, was asked, and I just want to, for the public record, just go over these priorities, for those who maybe have not seen it, who are listening or who are interested later in listening. Our priorities that have been proposed are building a strong and capable organization and charter school community, that was carried over from last year. Increasing innovation and choice in public schools, also carried over from last year. Monitoring fidelity to charter agreement performance measures, financial health and governance, so reflecting those things that aren't redundant with USBE monitoring. Collaborating effectively with the Utah State Board of Education, charter associations, and the legislature, that carried over from last year, but more succinct and reflecting, I think, more our, our stance on that outward-facing organization that we want to become. Forming productive partnerships with authorized schools, again, that's carried over from last year, but revised somewhat to reflect our, I think, the will that our board has at this time. And then this as well, which is, again, my interpretation of what the board's will may be, along with Brian and staff, developing customized performance measures. Now, this is different from aspirational goals in an Exhibit A, this is different from requiring students per se, or schools per se, because some will, to have specifically academic goals or performance measures. Getting the goals out of there, because they have for too long now been aspirational and things that our charter schools will never achieve, they've put in things that simply aren't realistic and aren't necessarily reflective of the students they're serving and reflective of the programs they have and of the, what their parents and families value. So developing customized performance measures embedded in bilateral charter agreements for each authorized charter school. And I come back to that example of a school with a performance measure of credit, credit recovery measures, in some cases, attendance measures, and in some cases, then graduation measures would probably be an important part of that, of a school like the one I've described. And we've put in a timeline, because that's helpful, governance has a right to do that without dipping into management. To be fully achieved in one year, execute a memorandum of understanding with the State Board of Education, it's simply past time for that. And we are looking forward to not only being able to do that, now that our leadership team has more understanding of what the barriers were before, and the limits of our ability to be autonomous, but also being as much autonomous within those limits as possible, as well as, we hope, even legislative changes in language that will help support clarification between our two boards. That's already something that a legislator has agreed to run. Build relationships with other charter authorizers to support good authorizing within Utah's charter movement. We think we can get that done in one year. To be fully achieved in three years, and many of these things have to start now in order to be fully achieved. Partner with authorized charter schools to support their achievement of unique charter agreement, performance measures, financial stability, and good governance. Increase capacity among SCSB members and staff for supporting the priorities of the SCSB. Provide substantive value as a bilateral partner to charter schools, or sorry, to schools authorized by the state charter school board while supporting a competitive authorizing environment. And this comes from many comments that have been made by members on this board. I remember Member Cisneros asking, what value? It's really an important question to ask, what value do we bring to the charters that we authorize? To be fully achieved in five years. Increase diversity of viable applications for new charter schools. Establish an innovative, friendly, and flexible environment for charter school operation related to state law, USBE rule, and equitable funding. And this is that outward-facing lobbying, if you will, with the associations in front of the legislature, in partnership with the USBE. We do much more when we're, we have them aligned with our goals as well. Increasing diversity of viable applications for new charter schools, this has certainly been a strong message given by the legislature. And at times, this board has asked in the past, is it our responsibility to look for and promote and strengthen these diverse applications for our portfolio and for our students and families? And the answer is that that's, that is actually something that is already an option for us in, in statute, and it's not been an area where we've gone out recruiting, perhaps the way we should have. Widely share innovative practices developed within Utah's charter schools with other charter schools and districts. We've always wanted to do that, we've, again, this is in something that's sort of both implied and stated in statute, and we've not done, we've not done much of this. To be fully achieved in more than five years, increase, now, I'll go through these, but there's a, there's a recommendation on the first one. Increase the number of SCSB staff members to support achievement of strategic goals. Be designated among the top 10 states for charter schools by the National Alliance of Public Charter Schools. And if memory serves, and Ms. Stephenson can help me here, I think we're 21st or 24th, somewhere in that range, and so we're, we fell out of the top 20, and that was quite disturbing to me. I, I want our, our state to be, to be one of those places where really great models come, because we're such a great place to be authorized. Promote the success of charter schools through strategies related to flexible, adaptable, and accommodating authorizing, along with VSIP mergers and creative articulation agreements. And to explain that briefly, because when you're kind of looking at that maybe, you know, in the comfort of your own home, you think, well, that sounds kind of good, what is that? We have this wonderful way for a charter that's struggling to try to kind of stay alive or to have some of its key elements live on in another charter with VSIP. In an increasingly competitive environment and a declining demographic of school-aged children, why aren't we looking at that at times with schools that are maybe struggling to be financially healthy? I'm not going to say enrollment again, because per se, that's not the problem, it's the financial health that may or may not be related to enrollment. And, and yet, have something that could become a sister school, and without, you know, without really being in a position of recommendation for closure, or probation, or warning, or some other action by us, could strengthen both schools by some kind of a very creative arrangement or actual merger. In addition, we have these articulation agreements, we're all familiar with what those are in our state, but as, as Chair Bowles has often noted, one of the ways, one of the most effective ways that our charters in rural areas have of creating economies of scale is through the consortia of regional services, News, Cuse, and others. And they've been generous about allowing charters into those, and those are wonderful. I happen to have been affiliated with a school that had the opportunity to partner with News in that way, and the benefits that came to a small LEA charter school from that, from that relationship, it was astounding how much of a difference it makes. And particularly through those lean years, when you're, when you're a startup, really particularly through those. In any case, wouldn't there be a way that we might be able, as a board, to be the impetus, whether it be at a legislative level or even just at a local level, of creating similar consortia for some of our charter schools, who find themselves in urban areas and not able to join those consortia, but nevertheless needing that because of the, you know, their size or their isolation, in some cases, from, you know, other schools or even districts? We can do better, you know, there are so many, you think of, in the private sector, how many amazing types of relationships are legally allowed to emerge and to be formed? They're almost infinite in type, within categories, right? So one of the things that we think would be really amazing is to use our technical skill as a, as the board, and we are allowed to provide technical support with things that concern our charters, and find, and think, things that we haven't thought of yet, we haven't even thought of them because we, it wasn't one of our goals, it wasn't one of our strategic goals. Find ways for our charters to not only survive but thrive in what will be an increasingly competitive and increasingly difficult, you know, financially difficult environment to survive in. So coming back to the very top one there, to increase the number of SCSB staff members to support achievement of strategic goals. It's been suggested, and I agree with this, that maybe this is a staff decision, the number of staff members. My thinking here, and those with whom I spoke, is that, yes, it is, in one sense, how, how, how many staff members you have and how they're structured and managed is definitely an ED function, but without the board's support from a resource point of view, you know, typically, the board approves a budget, and perhaps that would be our, our way of not only, you know, sort of increasing our, our number of staff members, but ensuring that we have the highest quality staff members, right? We have openings, don't we? And often our, you know, our salaries haven't been as competitive as they should have to, and we've talked about this in open meeting already before, so this shouldn't, this is not a grenade that I'm dropping, I know I'm prone to do that, but this is not one of them. And we've talked before about the fact that because we're not as competitive, even as, in some cases, USBE or, or sort of other, other positions that are, that the kind of people we're looking for might be taking in our own charter school sector, that, you know, we, we have the goodwill of those, of our staff members who have dedicated their work to us, and we're so pleased with that work, I want to say that on the record. And we appreciate those, those who have recently left their work that they gave to us the time that they were here with us, we have gratitude for that. But if we want to, first of all, keep the good staff members that we do have, and second of all, ensure that we fill the open positions with really good, qualified people, so maybe, what I'd like to suggest is that we rework that, that goal, because I do agree with your suggestion, Members Cisneros, on that, that the number is not really what we're looking for here. Maybe we can say something such as increase resources, you know, I'm, I'm actually sort of making this change and then seeing what you think. Increasing resources available to SCSB staff or available, please.
Can we instead move it to a priority? So instead of it being in strategic governance goals, it's a priority of us as a board, that our staff, that our executive director always has the resources necessary in the budget to have the staff necessary to achieve our goals?
I like that a lot. Okay, I'm, I'm popping this up to priorities, and I want you to go ahead and restate that, if you would.
I'm a one-and-done kind of, you get it when I say it, or you don't get it. Once it's out, it's out, let's see. Ensuring our, our executive director always has the resources in the budget necessary to achieve our strategic goals.
She did it twice, so I'm going to read it again, though, because I want to make sure that I, see, ensuring that the executive director of the SCSB has the necessary resources to achieve the board's strategic goals.
Yep.
That, I, not the board, the state charter school boards.
Well, you have to support achievement of strategic goals in the bottom, I guess you could just.
Yeah, no, I'm clearing that out. That was just, that was just, while I was quickly typing. That was just, that was just while I was quickly typing what you were saying. So what we have now, the way it reads now, would be develop, in, in the copy that I'm editing, not in your copies, develop, unless you're looking at the, the same one. Developing custom, oh, no, what did I just do? Hold on. I just undo. Hold on. Undo. My goodness. Okay. Hold on. There we go. Okay. And I'm going to do this. One second. We will see that, and we will see this. And let's go with ensuring, because otherwise, member Bassett will fix that for me again. Thank you, member Bassett. Oh, my gosh. I've done it again, sorry. I'm just having trouble with Google Docs, okay? There we go. So now it reads, ensuring that the executive director of the SCSB has the necessary to, resources, let's just say, the executive director, if we could, has the necessary resources to achieve the state charter school board's strategic goals. Then we're not redundant. Okay, does that? Okay, so, and I've taken it, I've removed it from, I've removed it from the, the other place. And member Bassett, I want to accept your suggestions to date it, which I think is really important. And we've put that now throughout the bottom of the document, which is a great add. So now, are there, board members, I open it up to you to.
Just to answer one of the questions you had asked while you were going through that. We are 25th out of 45, and that was, our score stayed the same, but some other states moved up, and so we fell four spots, even though our score stayed consistent.
I hate that. It's that growth measure, isn't it? We're stagnant. Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking forward to, you know, our board moving it, it's, moving forward.
And not that we're competitive.
We aren't. I want to be number one. I do. I really do. I want us to be the best state to come and charter a school in.
I just wanted to comment about the historical narrative in the beginning of the plan. I really appreciate that. I think it provides context to the why and how we got here. I definitely can see us continuing to add to that story as we, as we live in this plan. I, I mean, I know that we're mindful of the cumbersome nature of a document. I just thought it was very comprehensive and beneficial to have that information in there. And I also appreciated the new data that helps frame, again, the why behind these goals. So I, I just wanted to make that comment.
If I may, I, I, I like a good, robust edit of a document. I really enjoy that. But I, I really couldn't find anything to critique about this document. I think it's well written. I like all the background material. I do like that all of this is in one page, and I hope those edits you just made didn't turn it into a page and two lines.
I'm, I'm going to fix that. I'm going to fix that right now.
Change the margins. Please do something to make sure this is on one page. Because I, I do think this one page, if someone wants to really just look to the meat of what our priorities are and what our plans are in the future, this is the document, this is the one page that encapsulates everything. And I, I think it's well done. I really don't have any other comments. So thanks for putting it together.
So Michelle and I were talking earlier about how I'm becoming a cynic. So I'll go ahead and take that right after. Member Olson's very optimistic. Having said that, I absolutely agree, and, and will echo the comments I wrote, which is I love, love, love this. May I ask for a compromise then? Because although I agree the context is important and the data is critical, and we should certainly take our own advice of, of learning from history and being data-driven. I fear that too many of us have squirrel moments and don't get to the meat of the document for the robustness at the beginning of the document. So if we don't want to link it, put it somewhere else, and then link it in the document, could we revise its location in the document? Put the meat at the beginning and the, supplement details to follow? Is that a compromise I could ask for?
I love that so much. Yeah. This could, yeah. We'll, we'll just change the table of contents. We could, we could make it another appendix, or we could put it down below as history.
Because I think the, the first paragraph we have here is a great introduction as well. One other just thought I had that, as I was writing on my paper. Vice Chair Phillips made the comment that we would love to be a state where models want to come. And so I wrote the note, does our behavior match that? And what I was thinking of was the two applications from Arizona that came to us in August. And if memory serves right, we were pretty critical of them coming from Arizona. And so I just want to make sure that what we write and what we do is consistent and that although many times these are aspirational, whether that's GE's strategic plan or our little one, right? They are written with aspiration. But we also want to make sure that our behavior is consistently matching. So I can't wait to see this one pager on my desk in front of me come January so that I can make sure that my words and behavior match when we have the applications in front of us.
And of course, that means, and I know you agree, that just because it came from another state doesn't make him a quality charter either. We still have to evaluate that. Yeah.
And I'd just like to say that already, even as we say the words "quality charter" in the context of this strategic plan, what we're looking at is some, is, is a charter that offers educational outcomes, unique educational outcomes that we believe will serve our families and students in our state.
Well done. Yeah, go ahead, member Spiker, if you have another.
I was going to entertain a motion.
All right. We'll take that motion. Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to accept. Is that the right word? Yeah, no, well, I don't know if I'm, approve. Yeah, I don't know if I'm accepting. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Utah State Charter School Board's strategic plan with the edits discussed in relation to the goal of resources from the five years moving to a priority and the edits from member Bassett and.
And member Cisneros.
And member Cisneros. And dated as of today.
Excellent. So there's a motion that we, that we are going, that we adopt this strategic plan with those edits in place, a second to that motion?
Yes, I second.
And a second from member Olson. So original motion, member Spiker's, and second from member Olson. I always have to remember to say that, so we get those minutes right. So all, additional discussion from this board. You've had some good discussion. I might want to add, and I think the rest of you do as well, that we appreciate particularly Vice Chair Phillips, and I think Ms. Stephenson, who both worked together to, to reduce this, not to reduce, to reconceive our strategic plan into the document that we have today so that we have a working document that makes sense to us that we can use. So I just wanted to add that. It's not necessarily a discussion, but a thank you and to acknowledge the quality. Any discussion to that motion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. And any opposed? Obviously, I think everyone said yes before. I didn't even need to ask opposed. So it's unanimous. And I, I know that if member Smith was with us this afternoon, so she doesn't, isn't going to officially register her vote, but know that she indicated her support for this plan as well. All right. That concludes all of our business items today. We do have need, which is nice for everyone, that we, I suspect, will be able to conclude our meeting today early. Yes. But we do have, and we do need to go into a closed meeting today. I still am saying that, I think we'll still close early. We're not going to have a long closed meeting. I think of just a brief one for the purpose of discussing the competency of an individual, which is one of the purposes for which we may go into a closed session. But I will tell you, it's so we can talk through our executive director's search and kind of talk about individuals relative to that. So I'll be more specific, but for the, really the general purposes, competency of an individual. I think that I must have a motion to go into that and then a roll call vote. So would someone make a motion to that end?
I'll make a motion to move to closed session to discuss the competence, character competence of an individual.
Thank you so much. And you added the character too, so thank you. And do we need a second? I think so.
I'll second that.
So a motion from member Spiker, a second from member Olson. We're not going to debate that, just vote. So let me, a roll call vote, member Spiker.
Yes.
Member Olson.
Yes.
Member Bassett.
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes.
And member Cisneros.
Yes.
All right. We are going into a closed session. So we'll ask Ms. Stephenson and, and Ms. Castier, Castiglione, if they will step out. This is off. Thank you so much. Thank you. And I think we'll go again with the affidavit that worked well. For this purpose, we can do that and, okay.
Recording in progress.
Okay. There we go. Thank you so much. All right. We're, have been meeting in a closed session. This Utah State Charter School Board now 2:44 on the 14th of September. I have a, a motion.
Move to go into open session. Oh, yeah, that was first.
A motion to, to come out of closed, back into open session. A second to that motion. Second from Vice Chair Phillips, a motion from member Bassett, second from Vice Chair Phillips, member Spiker voting on that motion. Yay, yay.
Yes.
Member Olson.
Yes.
Member Bassett.
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes.
And member Cisneros.
Yes.
All right. We are back into open session. I think that concludes all of our business today. I don't know of any other additional business unless someone needs to discuss. We've covered everything on our agenda. We had a busy meeting today and accomplished a lot. We will, just looking forward, meet in a closed meeting relative to our executive director, a new executive director, a week from tomorrow, Friday, September 22nd. And then we meet again in regular board meeting, October the, if I had my calendar out, I could tell you. 12th. Thank you. October 12th, Thursday, October 12th. And so, well done, everyone. All right. Do we have any additional motions today?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, which I don't, does it need a second? We'll, I don't think so. All in favor, say aye. And we are adjourned. Thank you for your day.